I'll call a meeting to order, please, and everybody welcome to the Planning Commission. Brenda, any changes to the agenda?
There was an item added to the Other Business section, and you have the revised agenda at your place.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need approval of the November 8, 2012 minutes. If there's any additions, corrections, leave them those at this time. Motion second to approve the minutes of November 8, 2012, all in favor? Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Do any council members, sitting council members in the audience? I haven't seen any, but if you're here, please come forward. If not, then we will go on to the items on deferral, Brenda.
There are three items to be deferred. The first is Item 1, which is on Page 5 of your agenda. This is a request to rezone from OR 20 to SP mixed-use zoning for properties located at 2400 Crestmore Road and 3813 and 3815 Clegg Horn Avenue permitting all uses of the MUGA district except those uses prohibited on the plan and utilizing most bulk standards of the MUGA district, and the recommendation is to defer to the January 10, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. The next item on the deferral agenda is Item 3. This is a request to amend a portion of the Nashville Village PUD for property located at the southwest corner of Nashville Boulevard and Flintlock Court, Zoned R10, to permit neighborhood retail uses not to exceed one story, and staff is recommending to defer indefinitely. The final item on the deferral agenda is Item 4. This is a request for final plat approval to create five lots on property located at 3400 Leland Lane, and the recommendation is to defer to January 10, 2013 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the request from the staff at Items 1, which is 2400 Crestmore, Item 3, Nashville Village Site 15, Item 4 is 3400 Leland Lane and Norton property beyond deferral. Is there a motion to accept those? Motion second, all in favor? Those items have been deferred. Items on consent.
Before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with a decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Now, I'm going to read the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the The first item on the consent agenda is Item 5. This is a request to amend the West Nashville Community Plan by changing the policy from suburban neighborhood-evolving to urban mixed-use neighborhood for properties located at the northeast corner of Osceolo Avenue and Burgess Avenue, and the recommendation is to approve. The next item is Item 7. It's on Page 6 of your agenda. This is a request to amend the Donaldson Hermitage Old Hickory Community Plan by changing the policy from single-family detached in neighborhood general to district office concentration for property located at 1813 Golf Hub Road, and the recommendation is to approve. The next item is Item 8.
Brenda, if you would, on Item 8. Go ahead and read the others. I want to vote on all of them except 8, and then I'll vote on it separate because I have a conflict on that.
Okay. Then moving past 8 to Item 9. This is a request to rezone from IWD and RS 15 to AR 2A for properties located at 4223 Ashland City Highway and Ashland City Highway unnumbered, and the recommendation is to approve.
May I ask you a question about that one? Or do you want me to ask you in a minute? Just, I don't want to take it off the agenda. I just wanted a question. There was, is it typical sometimes that we ignore stormwater? I just noticed that was the statement under the Stormwater section that said ignore, and I didn't know if that was...
That's what they say, that they had no issues with it.
They didn't have, that's what that meant. Okay. And then the second question I had was, I noticed it's mostly in the floodplain. Is there a design or something that, do we have to meet some criteria to be able to build there?
Certainly, they would have to meet all the requirements of the code, and the policy actually would suggest that AR 2A was a much more appropriate zoning district than the residential districts that are in place now.
So then when they submit a design, it would have to be compliant to whatever that floodplain rules are, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
And the recommendation for Number 9 was to approve. The next item is Item Number 11. This is a request to apply a neighborhood landmark overlay district on property located at 608 Shelby Avenue, and the recommendation is to approve. Then there's Item 13, which is on Page 8 of your agenda. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of the Burton Hills Planned Unit Development on property located at 1 Burton Hills Boulevard to permit the addition of a one-story parking deck and to reduce the height of the office building from four stories to three stories, and staff recommend, the recommendation is approved with conditions. The next item is Item 14. This is a request for final plat approval to create four lots on properties located at the northwest corner of Sevier Street and South 18th Street, and the recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 15 is also on Page 8. This is a request for final plat approval to create four lots on properties located at 1633 and 1635 Sixth Avenue North, and the recommendation is to approve with conditions, including revised condition from Water Services, and that revised condition is at your place. And on Other Business, Item 16, Amendment Number 1.
Just a second, Brenda. We've had a request to speak on Item 15 from someone in favor. I assume you don't want it pulled off.
Under Other Business, Item 16, Amendment Number 1 to Contract Number L 2781 between the Nashville Civic Design Center and the Nashville Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO, and the recommendation is to approve. Item 17, FTA 5303 Grant Contract between TDOT and the Metro Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO for the period of July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2016, and the recommendation is to approve.
I have a quick question on that. Is that a norm, have we done that before in the past, that particular contractor? Is this something new?
I'm going to have to ask Rick for that one.
Have they contracted with that specific contractor?
Yeah. And what does this contract specifically do?
This is a contract that is being done by the MPO, and they follow, they basically follow their own processes, which are metro processes, but they go through a selection and then make a recommendation, and the Commission acting in there. So I can find the details. I don't have them myself.
Do we know if the market's full?
Yeah, we can pull it off, and I can find out before the end of the meeting.
Yeah, that would be great. I would just like to know what we're doing. Care about that stuff. Thank you.
items on consent, Brenda?
But that's in favor.
Okay. So Item 17 is off the consent, and the final item on the consent agenda is Item 18, which is Employee Contract Renewals for Craig Owensby, Brenda Bernards, Tiffany Capehart, Mary Beth Stevens, and Kyle Lambert, and the recommendation is to approve.
Okay. The items to be considered on consent are Items Number 5, 7, 9, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Is there a motion to accept those?
17 is off.
17 been pulled?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. Would you read those again? Okay. Would be Item 5, 7, 9, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 18. Is there a motion to accept those items? Motion second to accept those items, all in favor? Any opposed? Brenda, if you would, read Item Number 8, and I'm going to ask the vice chair to chair that portion of the meeting because I have a conflict on that.
Okay. Item 8 on Page 7 of your agenda is on the consent agenda, and this is a request to rezone from R 6 to specific planned residential zoning for properties located at 414 and 416 Ackland Park Drive to permit eight residential units, and the recommendation is to approve with conditions, including the revised conditions for Metro Public Works and disapprove without all conditions, and the revised conditions are at your place.
You've heard the explanation of Item Number 8, which is on consent, and we've heard nothing from anyone here wishing to testify. No person wishing to testify. Is there a motion? We approve Number 8 on consent.
So moved.
All those in favor, vote aye. Those who vote no? Show that I abstain on that, if you would. Chairman abstains. Thank you. Okay. For the audience, the items that'll be on public hearing today is Item Number 2, which is Nashville West End, Item 6, A and B, which is the South Nashville Plan at Taxly Avenue, and Item Number 10, which is the Murfreesboro Road, and Number 12 is the McDonald's on Broad, and Number 17, which in form of a contract, what was Number 17?
It's a contract. And... It's a contract. We'll try to get an answer for that, there's a specific question.
We're ready for Item Number 2 to be heard.
Commissioners, this is Item Number 2. It's the Nashville West End SP. It's a request for zone change from the MUIA zoning district to an SP. The request specifically is for hotel, multifamily, and commercial uses. The SP would utilize the bulk standards of the MUIA zoning district, except for building height. The MUIA zoning district allows for a 15-story building height, and the two separate elements of this SP, of this development, are hotel and a residential portion, and those would be 17 and 16 stories. And staff recommends approval with conditions of the SP. Again, the existing zoning is MUIA. It was approved in September of this year with the Midtown Zone Change, and again, this SP would utilize most of these, most of the bulk standards of the MUIA zoning district. And again, building height is the main element that would be, that the SP would be needed for. The land use policy is T 5, mixed-use neighborhood, and this was approved with the Midtown Plan. There's a special policy in this land use policy that recommends building heights of up to 20 stories along the main roads here, Broadway and Division. This slide shows the existing conditions and the proposed site plan alongside by side. The red outline shows the proposed building outline on the site plan, and the red outline on the left shows the property outline. But you can see this is the first-floor plan with retail uses, hotel lobby on the northern portion, and retail space on the southern portion. There are several access points to the project site on the northern portion. Across from 21st Avenue is an access drive to a parking area, the above-ground parking structure. There's a hotel entrance along Broadway and another entrance to the parking structure along 20th Avenue. And along with the SP proposal, there are improvements to the Broadway and 21st Avenue street frontage, and the improvements to two different intersections on Division and Broadway and 21st and Broadway. Here's the building elevation drawing showing the front facade along Broadway and 21st. The image on top shows the hotel. Again, this is the 17-story portion, and on the bottom shows the residential portion of the SP, and that's the 16-story portion. This is a massing model that was provided by the applicant. This basically shows where the building height will be dispersed among the site. Again, this is from across the street on Broadway and 21st, kind of from the Vanderbilt side of the street. Traffic study was done with this project, and it was approved by Metro Public Works. It includes improvement, the recommendations of the traffic impact study, improvements to adjacent intersections, including pedestrian crossing improvements, bus accommodations, and the realignment of intersections. It also includes the widening of the alley behind the project site, and also to lane markings on surrounding streets. And to close with an aerial of the site, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. Item is open for public hearing. The applicant has 10 minutes to make a presentation, and you can keep that two-minute set for rebuttal if you would like.
Good afternoon. My name's Jeff Beidel. I'm with Buckingham Companies. I'll be the development manager on this project. I want to thank Metro Planning staff, Council Lady Gilmore for their support and cooperation in the project thus far, and want to thank you all for your time spent reviewing this project. Buckingham Companies, my employer, has been in business for over 30 years. We have currently over $1 billion of multifamily mixed-use developments. We have the lead developer on which we are currently managing. Mixed-use development like this, we are very familiar with, and in the process of completing a very similar project in downtown Indianapolis worth $150 million. We are very proud of this proposed project and committed to it, as we already executed a long-term ground lease for the property. This will be our first project in the Nashville market, and therefore be our flagship. We intend on being Nashville for quite some time. Currently, the proposed development includes 350 apartments, 165 hotel rooms, 38,000 square feet of retail development. The use of the overall design and the concept of the project were developed in an effort to complement the surrounding neighborhood and the surrounding architecture on Vanderbilt's campus. We believe this project accomplishes that goal by adding a dense urban infill project to community that promotes walkability and alternative transportation options. Our original SP submission was showing a 19-story hotel on the northern portion. We are foregoing that and limiting the height of the hotel or northern portion of the tower to 17 stories. Moreover, as indicated earlier, most of the project will only be 16 stories high, in the middle and southern portion of the project. Likewise, if the project does not get off the ground, we have already agreed as a condition with the owner of the property that the SP zoning, if we obtain it, will be removed, and the property will revert back to the base zoning. We have numerous lenders that are interested in this property and this development. We have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we hold a long-term ground lease on the property, showing our commitment to not only the Nashville market, but this community and the development. We are committed to Nashville. This will be a great project, and we are committed to doing the right thing. This will not be a failed project. We assure you that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Amy Birch. I'm a professional traffic engineer with RPM Transportation Consultants, and we prepared the traffic impact study on behalf of the developer. The proposed mixed-use development is located in a dense neighborhood in Midtown, which includes residential uses, retail, restaurant uses, office uses, as well as Vanderbilt University and Medical Center. As you're probably aware, pedestrian activity is high in this area, which can be attributed to the density, mix of uses, and contiguous sidewalk network. Because of the location and mix of uses, the development will generate a lot of pedestrian trips, as well as have opportunities for transit use. For these reasons, the proposed development will generate significantly less traffic than a similar-sized development in a suburban setting. Our analyses show the roadways and intersections in the study area will operate at good levels of service following the completion of the development and proposed roadway improvements. We understand that access to the development is a primary concern for both the success of the development, as well as the existing properties adjacent. The proposed development includes major improvements to the intersection of 21st Avenue and Broadway, which includes realigning 21st Avenue, installing a traffic signal, and enhancing pedestrian facilities. Primary vehicular access to the development and the garage will be provided at this new signal. Secondary vehicular access is proposed along 20th Avenue and the alley. Based on traffic characteristics and driver behavior, most of the development traffic will utilize the signalized access at 21st and Broadway, because that will just be more convenient. The proposed roadway and intersection improvements will provide significant enhancements for pedestrian safety by providing signalized pedestrian crossings across Broadway and 21st Avenue. Other improvements include an always-stop at Division and 20th. We've worked closely with Public Works and Vanderbilt to identify these improvements, making sure both vehicular and pedestrian traffic is considered and accommodated. Finally, it's our professional opinion that the proposed development will have minimal impact to traffic in the area, and that the improvements that have been proposed by the developer and have been made conditions of approval will provide good access to the development. Thank you.
I'm Philip Piercey. I'm with Federal John Engineering. We've spent a lot of time so far on this project. We've met, had numerous meetings with the planning department, with Public Works, and have also met with Watersure regarding the project. It's, the project like this, it's a signature location, and it needs a signature structure on it, and the time we spend there is justified, and we've had two community meetings, one in the Adalicia, so we knew there had some concerns, and also one that was located over Vanderbilt, where I believe the, with y'all's process, we invited over 400 people to that meeting, only had a handful to come to see what we had or express concerns. As Amy and Greg have described, there's a lot of roadway improvements that will work, help assist the vehicular traffic, but also improve the pedestrian traffic. The alley will be widened. We're dedicating some more rideaway because the alley there is only 15 feet currently. We'll take the utilities that are in the alley, put those underground, overhead power and cable lines. Stormwater will be drained out toward Broadway, where we'll provide a water quality unit and discharge to the underground system that's there. The service area of the project is located beneath the building to keep it hidden and out of the views of the surrounding, from the surrounding neighbors. The parking garage for this facility is located on the upper floors with the units wrapped around it, such that we're not digging a large hole that will require a lot of blasting that would disturb neighbors, so our blasting will be minimized to just getting the footings and utilities in and not digging a large hole. The predominant reason for the SP is for the height. We are two stories over the MUIA zoning, but we're also three under what's recommended in the Midtown Plan for signature locations, which this would apply to this location being at the intersection of 21st and Broadway. We have received comments from the staff, and we're in agreement with this, conditions of approval. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Erica Garrison. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Waller-Lanston, Dorchen-Davis, and I'm here on behalf of the developer. I'd like to begin by reserving two minutes for rebuttal, so I'll be very brief at this moment. As you just heard from planning staff and the developer, this plan is consistent with the community plan. It provides a dense urban, walkable project that will anchor the area and bring additional jobs and tax dollars to the community. We think it makes good economic sense for the community, and it's just the type of development that Nashville needs. It will bring, potentially, we estimate $1.6 million annually in property taxes to the rolls, $1.2 million in HOT and sales taxes to the rolls for both state and local, and approximately 1,100 jobs, and those are part-time construction jobs and then some full-time jobs in the facility. So it's a great economic driver for the area as well. While we recognize that no development can make every adjoining property owner happy, we are committed here today to tell you that we will continue to work with any property owners that have issues, and we look forward to being a good neighbor in the community. Yeah.
Wanted to make sure you didn't go over something. Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the applicant? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Council Lady Gilmore? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward to the microphone.
I was speaking for the four. Good afternoon. I am Councilwoman Gilmore. I do want to thank each of you for your service. With the Buckingham development, we have had two community meetings. One was at the Adalicia, and one was at Vanderbilt Government Relations at that time. I think the neighbors had worked out most of the concerns. However, there were still some concerns, but I do not think that is anything that we cannot work through. So I would like to see this project move forward, and we continue the process of dialogue and working out those concerns that the neighbors may have at the Adalicia that was a handful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come to the microphone and give us your name, and you'll be limped in two minutes.
Hi, I'm Sydney McCann. I'm a homeowner at the Adalicia, which is at 920th Avenue South, across from the proposed site. Opposition or that, there have been a significant revision of the plans that were presented to us at our homeowner meeting that have not been shared with the association as a whole. I don't feel comfortable endorsing this without seeing that. Primarily, the increase in height on the residential side from 12 to 16 stories creates a more dense property than was promoted to us, which folds into concerns we had about traffic, congestion along 20th Avenue. And then additionally, we had asked, I asked at the Adalicia meeting, I asked at the Vanderbilt meeting for a 3D mass study to be provided by the developer. He said that it'd be provided within two weeks. I've not seen that yet. There was one meeting that he had with the president of our association. However, I'm a board member of the association. We have chosen to remain neutral. I have documentation of that. So the meeting that the developer had with our association president, Bill Merritt, was strictly, Bill was there as a homeowner, not representing the association. So I want to make sure that the board and the association that represents Seattle Adalicia has chosen to remain neutral, and each homeowner will get involved individually if they feel the need to. Thank you.
My name is Elaine Blake, and I'm a resident at the Adalicia. I'm also a member of the board, but I want to make it clear that I'm here as a homeowner, because that's the position we've taken. This is a signature location. What happens there kind of will begin things that happen in the neighborhood. So my concern is that we in the neighborhood really do know what's happening, and that just doesn't feel like it's completely happened. Yes, I appreciate that they did have a meeting, but we thought the next meeting after that was going to be in January, and then suddenly we're told it was today. So obviously, we didn't have a lot of time to prepare. So my concern really is just wanting to understand better what's going to happen, not that I necessarily will oppose this as a whole project. There are concerns about traffic on 20th Avenue, concerns about how congested this area is already, and yes, the parking hopefully will be a great help, but how do we access? This is such a tight spot with so many streets coming together. It's just not clear to us how this is going to help traffic, because it's going to bring a lot more traffic as well. People have talked about the canyon effect of the Adalicia with this next other tall building right up against it and one narrow street between. Wouldn't it be better to have a little more space in between those two? We at the Adalicia probably are the most affected. People in the hotel, which I, the hotel and the apartments will have windows looking directly into our windows. We have celebrities who live in the building. We have people who park at the bottom of our building to look for the apartments of these celebrities. What is that effect going to be? Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Lydia Jones, and I'm not on the board. My husband and I do own two units, though, at the Adalicia, and I was at the first community meeting that was referenced earlier at the Adalicia. After that meeting, just on a procedural point, we were told that the public hearing on this matter would be deferred until January. So this was a surprise to me as well, and had to scribble to even come here to voice my objection. I don't know all the procedural rules. I didn't have time to research it. I didn't have time to hire a professional to help me. However, if there is a procedure to delay this hearing for a time in which adequate notice could be given to all the homeowners, the ones who live there currently, and also the ones that may own property there and don't live there. We did learn a lot at the first community meeting, however, there's been substantial changes. We haven't seen the changes. We haven't been able to analyze the data. I understand that there was a staff report was prepared. I looked for it this morning. When I heard that this meeting was today, I could not find it on your website. So I guess my objection is to adequate information, continuing with the theme that's been presented, that they'd like to work with the neighbors. I guess what I'm saying is, we'd like to have that chance to work with them too, but we need to be adequately informed. So if there is a request to delay the hearing so other homeowners could get together and present their positions, and also hire professionals, if that's the decision we'd make, I'd like to make that request on behalf of myself to delay it so we could get more information. And I guess what I'm asking to delay is the actual hearing, so more people could be heard after we get adequate information from the developers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donald Seitz, and I'm a homeowner at the Adalicia as well. I'd like to just reiterate a couple of points. We had one meeting with the development team. It was a nice meeting, but what was presented at the meeting, we were told in person that some of the slides that they presented to us were not the actual plans, that they had somehow been altered a little bit. So we weren't really looking at what was intended, and now we've had a little switch again since that meeting. We also were told that our next meeting would be in January. I got word of this meeting two days ago. So I'm all for great, wonderful development. I would love a great project built next to our building. I think there's... I think they're very sincere in wanting to do that, and we as homeowners are well as sincere in wanting to maybe have one more meeting with their development team before any resolution is passed here today. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Andy Moats, also an Adalicia resident, and will echo what my fellow residents have suggested. We did have one nice community meeting. Many details seem left to be determined. The bulk of the height of the project is at the front door of the Adalicia, and while there appear to be more than appropriate setbacks and carve-backs on other areas, regarding other streets and areas of the property, the bulk of the height of the tower of the hotel, I believe, is again at our front door. So we do have privacy concerns. Certainly, views will be limited, and we also worry about sunlight and other issues. And again, not only the height, but the proximity of the tower to our front door. It's a very ambitious project for a little under two acres. I personally am pro-development and pro-mixed-use development on this site, but believe that each additional story that is built on this project could have an exponentially negative impact on the traffic patterns and certainly the views and privacy of the Adalicia residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, is there motion? You've got two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like.
Thank you very much. I will only take a few seconds of your time. In response to some of the concerns that you've heard from the Adalicia, I want to assure you that if another community meeting is necessary, we are more than happy to do it. We're more than happy to commit to do it before second reading and public hearing before the Metro Council to answer any additional questions they have with respect to the revised plans and the revised programming that you're seeing that Greg has presented to y'all. I assure you that, you know, with respect to the height, which is the primary concern that I've been hearing from folks in the Adalicia, that the height has only changed in a very minor way, and the height specifically of the hotel has actually been reduced by two stories from what was originally applied for. We made a concerted effort to address these design issues and to make the Adalicia aware of it, but to the extent there are some folks that need additional time to look through those plans or did not receive those plans, we'd be happy to go back out there for another community meeting. We look forward to being their neighbors, and we understand that there has to be, you know, additional dialogue and discourse, and we're happy to do that. And finally, with respect to the notice issue, again, we worked with the Adalicia and the Adalicia property managers and folks to make sure that they were aware of this meeting. Again, if some individuals weren't aware of the public hearing, we apologize for that, but from a legal standpoint, I believe this was on the agenda the last time, and a motion was made by this body to actually reconvene at this point in time. So from a legal standpoint, I would respectfully, you know, recommend that there is no issue there. But with respect to a communication issue, if there's a concern, we're happy to address it and have another community meeting.
Thank you. Lead a motion to close the public hearing. Motion second to close the public hearing. Go on in favor. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Jeff?
I think for Nashville to continue to move forward in a positive manner. We need projects like this. This is a very tight site, but it looks like they've thought through a lot of the issues, and I think this is a great project.
Greg?
I'm just excited to see residential as a component, since I'm always on the stump for that, mixing uses that include residential. So I think that's ambitious. It's not easy, and I'm thrilled to see it. I think it sounds like there's more communication to have, and I feel sure that that will happen with the community to try and listen to what anybody's concerns are so that there's still, the next public hearing is with Metro Council, so there's time for more meetings with the community between our meeting and the next public hearing at council, which is the more decisive, I mean, the next decisive step.
I thought Andrea was going to ask this.
Go ahead. Keep asking.
All right. Well, looking at the plans on the proposed site plan, I'm seeing two, I'm really familiar with it, Erica, it's always strived by there, so, but I see two signals. One, I guess is that Division and the other?
21st.
Is that 21st? Yeah. They just seem a little close together. Is that, who recommended that, or is that just part of the, was that Public Works recommendation?
Devin Doyle is here from Public Works.
Ah, perfect. Mr. Doyle?
I don't come here often, but hopefully I can help when I am here. Actually, there's only one new traffic signal that's proposed. It's at the realigned intersection of 21st and Broadway. I think you might have been referencing, there are some pedestrian enhancement improvements that are being proposed at the intersection of Division Street. Currently, we have a pedestrian-actuated flashing signal that really is located mid-block and is located a little bit, a little bit less than desirable location, and so we've actually worked with them in relocating that signalized pedestrian crossing. But as far as actual traffic signalization for vehicles, there is one new signal, and it's, like I said, at the realigned intersection of 21st and Broadway.
Perfect. Thank you.
Stuart? I'd like to ask Mr. Johnson about some of the other heights in the area. I understand that really, is it oversimplifying to say that the only reason this is not basically a matter of right is the two stories, is everything else is a matter of right? Are close to that?
Up to 15 stories is a matter of right in the MUIA zoning district, and it is that additional two stories for the hotel and one story for the residential portion that requires this SP application.
And you indicated that this is still, even as proposed, three stories less than the plan would indicate.
The plan recommends a maximum height of up to 20 feet along certain, I'm sorry, 20 stories, my fault, along major streets within the Midtown Plan area.
Well, this is obviously a structure that you wouldn't want on a lot of places in Davidson County because of how massive it is. But I came, I actually moved to Nashville and lived at the corner of 21st and West End in some very beautiful new buildings, Cassam Quadrangle, which they tore down last year for being too old. Later discovered they were built well after I was born, but that's all right. That was not this developer who added that. But I wanted to ask you, how large, do you know how tall those are, the replacement buildings for Cassam? Because it's right across the street there, coming up toward West End. Maybe somebody else knows that.
10 or 12. Exactly. Because they're across from the Los Medical Plaza Hotel.
And how tall was it?
It's close to the.
So when I moved here in the 60s, late 60s, we had four buildings very close there that were 14 stories in the 60s. And the Adalicia is how tall?
It looks to be about 18 stories.
I guess my point is, this is an area where we want our tall buildings. If we're going to have them, and we need to have them for a lot of different reasons, this is just, I think, the right spot for it. I am concerned, obviously, we're always concerned that people didn't understand about some things maybe, and there were hearings promised, but I suspect that the hearing and meeting discussed was probably the highly substantial meeting at the council that does come up in January. I don't know that. I guess I'm fairly comfortable with this because it is so close to what's already there, already allowed without rezoning, and because it is in one of those parts of our city where tall buildings are, in fact, more easily accommodated. That's my thought at this point. Thank you.
I think this is a great project and a great opportunity for Nashville. I'm familiar with the Buckingham company and some of their projects in other cities, and we should welcome them to Nashville. And again, it's so close to what they can do by right, and it's, and I know it'll be a high-quality project, so I'm supportive of it.
Phil? I would consider this a perfect project for this area, and I'm particularly pleased that the project is going to improve the traffic in that area. I've had some close encounters at those corners near there with other drivers, and it's scary. So anything to improve that's fantastic. I do have one quick question. When it says multifamily, is any of this geared to attract Vanderbilt students? And that may have to go to the developer to answer that question. Is that a target, a target customer for the housing?
Hello, my name is Scott Travis with Buckingham Development. And the, we look at Vanderbilt students as a customer. The project is not being, or is not project-specific in programming geared towards making it a student housing project, but we acknowledge there are graduate students with the law school and the medical school nearby that would probably look at this as a viable option for their residential choice.
Great. It just looked like a natural to me, so I just want to make sure.
Yes, of course. We're paying attention to them.
Great. Thank you very much. Looks great.
Councilman?
I just have a question for the staff in terms of notice of the public hearing that we're doing now. When did the signs go up?
The signs originally went up 10 days prior to the November Planning Commission meeting, and I'm not sure if they went down, if they came down between now and then, but they went up, they were up 10 days prior to this hearing as well.
Okay. So the letters that went out in November were the, those were the only letters, but those were the original notices of the hearing that we deferred until?
That's right. Letters went out for the November hearing.
Right. Okay. Well, it's unfortunate that there was some confusion on the part of the nearby residents, but I, you know, the adequate notice was given. I think this is an exciting project that's being presented here, and it certainly fits into that triangle area there, and it's in character with what's happening just within the immediate few blocks of that area. So I think this is, I think this is a good project, and I'm comfortable with it.
Andrea?
I just, I remember that somebody mentioned the massing. Could you show the slide that did show the massing? Because we did see that. Somebody in the audience asked, I don't know if that's what they were asking for, but that was a version of massing that we did see. And then I wondered if it would be helpful before the next community meeting for the developer to show an elevation of the 20th side to the public, which is near the Adalicia front door, and show, in fact, it looks to me like there are some setbacks away from the street that might help persuade some of those concerns. That's all.
I move approval of staff's recommendation. Second. Motion second to approve of staff recommendations. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're ready for item number six.
Council Lady Gilmore, she was going to speak, I think, and leave.
Okay. Council Lady Gilmore, I think you have to leave. Do you want to speak on one of the other items?
I did.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you once again for answering. Trying to see what number it is on here. Okay, it's number 12, the one that I would like to speak on. Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. You're so kind. I just wanted to share that I did attend the Design Review Committee meeting in August, and it lasted for about two hours, and I appreciated the thoughtfulness that the DRC Committee offered that's made up of architects and various people in the expert field. You will notice that the DRC members voted unanimously. This speaks to their confidence that another design solution could and should be implemented on the McDonald's site. Additionally, the downtown code was adopted nearly three years ago, and after four years of public input from residents and the development community, my constituents are familiar and supportive with the downtown code standards. If the decisions are made that chip away at the urban design requirements, the community will lose trust in the leadership. We both at the Planning Commission at the Metro Council unanimously approved the downtown code. We must uphold the intent to create a pedestrian-friendly urban downtown. I urge you to uphold the Design Review Committee's decision to deny the modification of the bill-to-zone. Additionally, several owners within the area have called me, and they told me they respect the decision that the committee has made, and I think that's very important as well considering that they are business owners in that gulch area there. Also, we know that the importance of orientation to streets and how that affects the way that pedestrians interact with them, and the safety, and how it affects the overall livability and the way that our city looks. So I hope that we'll keep on moving forward and continue to keep our commitment to urban planning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
We're ready for item 6A.
Item 6A and 6B will be taken together. They're a planned amendment and a rezoning request for property on Tansley Avenue in South Nashville. Here you see the property outlined in red. It's located at 316 Tansley Avenue. That's east of Nolansville Pike and south of Thompson Lane. Staff recommends that the commission disapprove or defer this request. In 2007, staff worked extensively with the community on updating the South Nashville Community Plan. Part of that process included a detailed neighborhood design plan for the Nolansville Pike corridor. The goal of the plan is to reshape the corridor into one with destinations, a walkable community with a mix of shopping, dining, entertainment, residential, and employment. Here you see the existing business that's located on Nolansville Pike. To the north is a lot on Tansley Avenue that the business has been using to store materials in tractor-trailers and for employee parking. With this amendment and rezoning request, the business would like to build a storage building for materials and a parking lot for employees. The business would still continue to haul materials back and forth across Tansley Avenue several times a day. However, the larger issue is commercial expansion into the adjacent residential neighborhood. Here you see areas outlined in red where non-residential uses have moved further into the residential neighborhood over time, often replacing houses. A yellow outline shows the applicant's properties. As you can see, when you look to the east, there's not a definitive boundary to use as a stopping point for commercial unless you go at least a block into the residential area. While the applicant feels that they are improving the existing conditions on the property with this request, staff emphasizes the larger issue of defined commercial expansion areas. The same issue is being raised along other corridors such as Gallatin, Charlotte, Murphysboro Pikes. Staff advises the best approach is to engage the larger community in conversations regarding our city's commercial corridors and areas where additional commercial depth may be warranted. These discussions will take place as part of the Nashville General Plan update process. Now, Dwayne's going to explain the applicant's resettling.
This portion of the presentation is related to the request to rezone the property. Property is currently zoned RS10, and the application in front of you, that's a companion to the Community Plan Amendment, is to rezone it to an automotive SP. The SP application proposes to allow automobile parking and warehouse uses on the property outlined in red. Staff's, I'm sorry, the SP is intended to be related to the tire-recapping business that exists southeast, excuse me, southwest of the subject property. Subject property, again, is currently zoned RS10. It's the shaded property in the middle of the map. Again, the applications to zone the property to SP, automotive SP. As Anita touched on, the current policy is single-family attached and detached neighborhood general, and the applicant is requesting to amend the policy to transition a buffer in neighborhood general. The SP in front of you proposes to use the existing undeveloped lot for automotive parking and warehouse uses. The SP proposes 13 paved parking spaces on the property, one 1,200-square-foot, single-story storage building at the back of the property, and then another highlight of And then another highlight of the SP is the inclusion of a six-foot masonry screening wall along the east boundary line to buffer the proposed use of the property from abutting residential properties. Here's a site, a visual of the site as it's recently existed. And staff's recommendation is to disapprove the request to rezone the property or defer indefinitely to enable a broader view of policy as it relates to Community Plan Amendment.
Staff's going to be live 10 minutes, make their presentation.
I have a few drawings. Just sit by. Take my dog. Can I do this?
They'll pass them down.
My name's Tony Snyder. I'm a civil engineer in Nashville at Snyder Engineering, and I am the applicant representing the property owner. Tire recappers, if you don't know, they recap tires. They bring in rubber material in pellets, and they have machinery inside their building that they take old tires and strip off the old rubber, recycle it, put new tread on, and sell the tires. It is kind of a recycling business in that it takes a whole lot less oil, takes twice as much oil to make a new car than a new tire as opposed to a recap tire. So it's green. They've been operating there for about 50 years in that location, basically doing the same thing day in, day out. They have trucks coming in and out, loading the materials, taking tires away, bringing tires in. And there was problems with traffic on Tansley Avenue. So the owner bought the lot, not knowing, well, it was residential, knowing he would have to rezone it. So we've gone through this process to rezone, finding out that we needed to change the community plan in order to do that. We have got together with planning and come up with a plan that we thought was going to work. As it turns out, we have been informed that the Planning Commission has, or the staff has disapproved. And I think mainly because of the community plan change that we're wanting to make. The lot that they've chosen to solve their traffic problem with as far as cars and employees' parking and moving materials in and out and storing materials intended to solve that What we were thinking that they were going to let us do was have a transition zoning, which is a transition community use for that piece of property, something that would transition between the commercial use of the auto zone that is on the front of Nolansville Road and the first house that is behind the vacant lot that we're talking about. What we're trying to do is make that transition. I'm not sure why that is not seen as a good transition as far as a parking lot. In the situation that we've got now, it'd be nice for somebody to come in there and put a nice building with retail or something, you know, or some type of transition multi-use that you guys might want to see. But in this situation here, I don't think that we'll ever see that actual piece of property be built on as a residential. It's been vacant ever since it's been a lot, I guess. It's never had a house on it. I'm not sure who would come in and buy that house and buy that lot and build a house there unless it was going to be something that was maybe a rental place that probably the neighbors wouldn't want to see that in there either. But just in my professional opinion, I know that the land use needs and wants of the neighbors might not be satisfied here, but it's going to solve the problem that's there. And I'm not sure there's ever going to be a, and I'm almost positive that this will not be, they won't change anything if you turn this down. It's still going to operate in an unsafe manner on that road, just as it's always been. Them doing as best they can to operate their business, just like they always have, except not being able to improve with this new lot. I want to let, I've got a few minutes left. I want to let Thomas Ford say some, he's the owner.
You can keep back two minutes for rebuttal if you like.
All right, we'll keep back two minutes. We've got five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Thomas Ford. I am recently become the operator of Tire Recappers. I'm third generation. My grandfather started the business. My brothers and I saw the need for this piece of property right here a couple of years ago as we were trying to grow the business before it was turned over to us to run. Through a couple of community meetings, I have learned how bad of a neighbor we have been. I've heard many things about the building, about the trailers that y'all saw parked there, just in general being bad neighbors. I cannot change the past. I have acted on everything that was asked of me as far as cleaning up the business, keeping the trucks out of the street as best as possible, moving all the ugly trailers off the lot. It's important for me not to have to tell 32 employees, y'all don't have a job anymore because you don't have somewhere to park. I'm willing to work with anybody and will do what I say I'm going to do if given the opportunity. I've tried to do that as a show face. Like I said, I cannot change the past, but I am trying to take a stand and do better. That's all I have. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question. This parking, is this for employee parking?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the warehouse, 12 square foot, what will be in there?
Tread rubber storage. Storage materials.
For the tires.
The materials to retread the tires.
Okay. Thank you.
They come in a pallet, you know, like this. Forklift comes and gets them, takes them across the street. One thing I want to do, I don't know if you guys have seen, if you'll notice, on the drawing there, this piece of property is bordered by a piece of commercial on the, I guess, on the west, and it's also bordered by commercial property on the north where the Nissan folks are. And then the other, of course, the other side is the residential house, and the other side is, of course, the road frontage. So it is a true transition into the neighborhood, and it's not, I don't think, such an intrusion into the neighborhood as you would normally have by just making some of the commercial right next to residential.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Counselor, go ahead and speak if you have.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to wait for the opposition, and I'd like to speak after everybody gets through, okay? Thank you.
My name is Anna Page, and I reside at 222 Wheeler Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, but more importantly, thank you for your service to the city. Tire Recappers has a lot to be proud of. They have been in our community in a long time. And a bragging point for them, they're the largest tire recappers for the U.S. Post Office. It's apparent they have an aggressive business plan for growing because they have done just that, grow. They have grown so much that they now use both Nolansville Pike and Tansley Avenue as a staging area for loading and unloading. They have grown so much, they illegally use a residential lot at 316 Tansley for parking and storage. They have simply outgrown their space. Now, they want to rezone this residential lot, extending commercial zoning into our residential neighborhood, which is something that the community plan does not allow. We celebrate their success, but we want our neighborhood to continue to be a success as well. We are not willing to set a precedent for more commercial encroachment. It's simply time for tire recappers to move to a commercial or industrial location that is more suited for their growing business. As an advocate for my community, I have never, ever had a neighbor say, "We need more auto-related industry in our community." Nor have I ever had a neighbor express a desire to have an auto-related industry move closer to their home and onto the street where they live. I ask you to please consider the many hours and time that my neighbors and I spent working with your staff and the community plan. I'd like you to think about the value of asking people to come together and work on their vision for the future. Their vision in the community plan called for protecting our residential area and discouraging auto-oriented uses. Your staff has recommended disapproval. I'm asking you to follow their recommendation for disapproval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Janice Santini, and I live at 188 Shilton Street. Some of you may know that I retired from DuPont several years ago. DuPont is known for its safety record for both its operations and, more importantly, its employees. I recall that each day when I crossed the fence line, the first company sign I saw was, "Safety first. If a job can't be done safely, it shouldn't be done at all." That was the creed by which all employees had to perform their jobs, no exception. The motto, "Safety first." Safety is paramount to me. The zoning request, as I understand it, is to rezone a residential property on a residential street to allow construction of a storage building and a parking lot for trucks. In addition, there will be loading and unloading of tractor-trailers, which will require backing in and pulling out of the parking lot on this residential street to deliver materials to the storage building. At the meeting I attended, the statement was made that the product would be moved by tow motor from one side of Tansley to the other, and that the street would be blocked during unloading for 30 minutes. I was not aware that any metro street could be blocked for an extended period of time on a regular basis. I checked with the community coordinator at South Precinct, who confirmed that this practice is not permitted. Then to further confirm, I checked with Metro Public Works and was told that they will not issue a permit on a regular basis. In the same meeting, there was concern expressed about the oncoming traffic possibly colliding with the tow motor. It was stated the tow motor wasn't very big and that the danger would be minimal if there was a collision. It might be minimal for the car involved, but the employee on the tow motor might not have any protection at all. What about the motoring public that's not aware of the tow motor carrying materials across the street? This is a collision waiting to happen. The process of transporting materials from one side of the street to the other is unsafe. I wonder if Tire Recappers liability insurance would cover this type of accident? And believe me, this is an accident waiting to happen. I would respectfully ask for you to disapprove this request.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Irene Kelly, Vice President of the Flat Rock Heritage Foundation, 10-year Glencliff Flat Rock homeowner and licensed real estate agent with Benchmark Realty for eight years plus. I'm here today to make the points against Tire Recappers' request to rezone 316 Tansley Avenue from residential, single-family to commercial. This kind of zoning change encroaches into the neighborhood and sets a precedent for more of the same in the future. It opens up for more possibilities for zoning requests from residential to commercial. I know this firsthand is not the direction the community wants to go in. This kind of zoning change would cause property values to go down along with the quality of life in Glencliff Flat Rock. It would be a downward spiral and quite possibly the beginning of the end as we know it. As a Realtor, I'm happy to report that in the past three years, Glencliff Flat Rock has been experiencing a consistent increase in property values. This increase in upwards of 15% in 2012 alone, this is significant, especially in consideration of declining property values in other parts of our country. In my professional opinion and research, this increase is not only due to Glencliff Flat Rock's close proximity to interstate access, affordable pricing for first-time home buyers, and young professionals moving into our community, but more importantly, a strong and caring community of residents, community leaders, and volunteers. We are a neighborhood. Longtime residents as well as new neighbors are dedicated to improving the area of Glencliff Flat Rock. This is what my neighbors tell me daily. This is also what my clients tell me. I'm committed to keeping the community going in the right direction. In closing, I want to also state I support all my neighbors' points tonight against this zoning change. I respectfully and earnestly ask you to vote for disapproval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. My name is DeeDee Brickner, and I am a property owner in the neighborhood. And I would like to briefly state my hopes that this item is disapproved. The adjoining property on Tansley and Nolansville Pike has already had cars and trucks parked in every area of open pavement and shoulders of the road. You saw the photo of the way they're parking in this residential lot now. It's always a mess. And allowing them to take over legally the adjoining residential property will allow their current unattractive industrial use to spread even farther into what is a quaint mom-and-pop neighborhood. I'm not against industries, but I believe they should be in industrial areas and not allowed to spread into residential areas. And then one thing I added was, I believe I heard from the first gentleman that they will continue to operate in an unsafe manner. They'll just have permission to do it if this passes. So that doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Freeman. I live on Tansley Avenue, just maybe 10 houses down. My parents own a small business. I like small business. I hope they do well. I will say what Thomas said. They have listened. They've painted, they've cleaned up. Trucks are not blocking the road as much as they have been since that first meeting. So I kind of wonder, where have the trucks gone? And if they can do business without this building and without blocking the road now, why are they still, why do we need this in our neighborhood? A few points. The opening that they're showing, I believe they said is about 24 feet wide. Tansley is about 24 feet wide. They're delivering 53-foot tractor-trailers. I'm not certain how they're going to back a 53-foot trailer into that spot without getting into the neighboring yards. Secondly, if this is changed to SP, what's to prevent our councilman now or a future councilman from changing it to full commercial? He's done it before. It could very well happen. I don't think I have anymore. Let me see. And then lastly, just what the gentleman said as well, I thought that was a great point that he brought up, that they're already unsafe. Now we're going to have, like he said, he's like, well, they're going to still operate in unsafe manner. Now we've just got a fancy new building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shara Carney. I've lived on Tansley Avenue for almost six years now, and I really like living in my neighborhood. During that time, we've had several issues with Tire Recappers. They use Tansley as if it's part of their lot, including leaving trash and pieces of tire and wood in the road. This is not the idea I had in mind for the future for our street. Little progress has been made with the current issues involving Tire Recappers. The progress that has been made with the current issues are a result of complaints to the city and police and to codes regarding the way they operate their business. So as far as the point of the owner making earlier that they're not aware of being bad neighbors, I really have a hard time believing they didn't know until this community meeting when codes has been called, the police have been called about traffic issues and all of that sort of thing. If allowed to expand across our street, I fear the problems will only worsen. Why would I want a business like that operating across and in our residential street? I don't mind being close to a very busy street. I really do like living in the city and in Nashville. What I do mind is an industrial business that has no regard for the residential neighborhood that lives behind them. If Tire Recappers is allowed to continue to take over our If tire recappers is allowed to continue to take over our street, it will definitely affect my decision on staying there. I love my neighbors and neighborhood and would love to stay here as my husband and I continue to grow our family. I think there's great potential for the area and promise, and I love the community that's there. I think leaving our community plan behind and allowing this rezoning to occur would be a bad decision for the whole area. We've spent a lot of time expressing our opinions about the future for this area in the community planning meetings. And I would like it if we, let's not abandon all of that work and take a large step back to allow this rezoning to occur.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Austin Groh. I am a resident of 306 Tanksley Avenue, which is four houses down, adjacent from Tire Recappers Nashville. I'm a first-time home buyer. I moved into the neighborhood three years ago, my first home, and it was an opportunity for an affordable, great home in a great vibrant community. I have a lot of younger friends, younger professionals similar to me, that are moving into the neighborhood because of its vibrancy and affordability. I am self-employed, so I work at home, so of course I am, you know, pro businesses. Being that I work from home, I'm constantly going from my home to Nolansville Road several times a day. And usually most days, it's either waiting for a tractor-trailer to pull out of Tire Recappers, waiting for an employee to walk across the street, or dodging traffic and trying to get to Nolansville Road. I love my neighborhood. I love the community. It definitely affects my daily life and turning onto my street. Having to go around to get a better view is not something I like. I'm absolutely opposed to this. I applaud their success, but I feel like encroaching into the neighborhood is something that really concerns me and also concerns all of my friends and younger people that are moving into the neighborhood and helping these property values rise up. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, how much time do they have? You have two minutes left for your rebuttal, and then I'll call on you, councilman.
I won't take long. As far as the unsafe conditions, they've been operating there for 50 years, basically the same way. You know, trucks come up, they unload them, trucks leave. As far as I know, just looking, and I've looked at the, I don't know how you find this out, I've looked at the Metro Police website as far as accidents. There's no more accidents reported for that location than anywhere else in town. I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not a propensity of accidents going on there. All I meant to say was that if you approve this and have a place to get them off the street, it'll be a safer situation.
Counselor.
I just want to say one thing.
How much time do they have?
I know there's a lot of opposition to this, and all I can ask is for the chance to write it. But we've been there a long time, not trying to use that to my advantage. But I didn't ask anybody that doesn't like me to leave, so I'm asking, please don't ask me to leave. Give me the opportunity to make it right. Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, thank you. As I look at Tanksley, if I could, could I get the drawing with the property itself up there, the overhead view? Yes, that one right there, that would be great. As I look at that property right there, I look at a property that is residential, but it looks like it's been outdated, outzoned for a long, long time. Can you ever imagine a house going back on that property right there? We've just had auto advance move from the building right here that butts up to that property up to the Antioch and Nolansville Road area. I don't know what's going to go in that building as of right now, but I have concerns that be an auto repair facility. They do have the bay doors on the side right there. There's been talk of maybe a furniture store going there also. The traffic that's going to increase right there concerns me a whole lot. This zone would give the first true buffer to that neighborhood. If you look to the north, you see a Nissan lot right there. I don't call that a buffer into the neighborhood. I call that total intrusion of a neighborhood. But if you look at this property right here, I'm trying to see where the intrusion in the neighborhood is. There used to be an alleyway that went all the way from Tanksley all the way over to Collier. And through the years, that's been blocked off, and other things has happened. If you look to the north, you've already got intrusion into the neighborhoods there. If you look to the south, you have tire recappers there. Look to the west, you've already got auto advance there also. If we leave this property the way it is, if they don't do anything to it at all, if all the trucks leave there from everything, it's a perfect dump place for people to haul behind buildings, dump off their truck and zip right out of there. You've got two different ways you can come into that facility right there. I also look at safety. As I was looking at this zone of this property also, you do have 18-wheelers that park right out in the middle of Tanksley for delivery for tire recappers. If this zone does go through, I think it takes that completely away. I mean, if you look at the plan, they've got a nice retaining wall coming up, they've got nice landscaping coming up. It's even going to come down Tanksley a little bit with a small sidewalk coming also. There'll be security cameras up in that area. We have had trouble with drug dealing going on over there before. We've tagging, gang tagging and things like this. My look at this is it's a true buffer between Nolansville Road and that neighborhood, and I think it would be a good zone. I know the land use policy, it's not exactly what the planning staff wanted, but if you look at this zone, it really straightens that place up back there, and I think it would be really good for the neighborhood. And I would ask for your approval this afternoon. Thank you.
Need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Councilman.
You know, I'm always hesitant to go against a community plan. Community plans are established over considerable period of time. Lots of work on the part of the planning staff goes into that. Lots of involvement with communities to come to a place to say, "This is what we want for our area." So it's always, I'm always hesitant to go against what a community plan says. When I look at what's being proposed here, a paved parking lot is certainly better than the pictures that we have of the gravel parking lot that's there. And I think if we were looking at an SP for an auto parking without a building, I could jump on board. But the addition of the building for storage introduces the commercial aspect in it. And I'm really hesitant to move in that direction. So I'll listen to see what some of the other folks say.
Bill?
I appreciate the staff's investigation of this request and the residents who came and talked about their concerns and the development proposal. But I do honor what the staff has found, and I'm going to go along with their recommendation to disapprove.
Hunter? Stewart?
Question or two for staff. The current activity on the properly zoned business that's operating on Nolansville is, what is that zone again? Not this property that's being, has to be rezoned, but what is the recapper's industrial use or what?
You'll see on the zoning map, the tire recappers is right here on this property in its own CS.
Yes. Is that proper for an actual manufacturing use? I guess it is.
For a manufacturing use, no, but I don't know the history of tire recappers.
So it's probably grandfathered, yeah.
It may have some guarantee.
You know, I think it's reminded me of one thing that I believe about our zoning, which is something we've tried to address. We probably don't have enough properly zoned industrial areas. Those are jobs we need, those are uses we need. And there are, we need to pay careful attention when it's not so clearly violating everything we think to actually do that in areas that are not built up. We need to remember next time somebody comes into an area that is reasonable for industrial to do it. Because those jobs need to be here just as much as high rises on 21st or Broadway. But this is way, way beyond anything I think we as planners can do. Obviously, the council has the last say on this. But if we do this, then next time it will be another house, another domino effect. And I appreciate the new owner's statement, and I know he believes that he will be able to, in the future, go forward. It is not an irrelevant fact that this neighborhood has endured many years of illegal activity by this business. That's not irrelevant to political or planning considerations. So while I'm in sympathy with people who want to be able to have small-scale industrial uses and offer jobs, this is, I have to agree with the staff on this and the neighbors. Thank you.
No comment.
Derek?
No comments.
Greg?
No comment.
Andre? Need a motion. We're going to need a motion for 6A, which is the change of land use policy first. And if that fails, then there's... On 6A. Motion second to, for staff's recommendation on item 6A. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, then there's no need to vote on 6B. Rick, you want to address item 17?
Yeah, I just...
Well, it's a moot point. You're not going to change the...
What you said.
Okay. Need a motion on 6B.
Motion disapprove 6B.
Okay, motion for 6B is to disapprove. All in favor? Any opposed? Just consider that a moot point.
Item 17 was pulled off the consent agenda, and the question was asked about the contract. This is the FDOT transit funds they pass to DOT, Tennessee Department of Transportation, and then they pass those on to the MPO. It's the way the local transit authority uses. So this is a standard process for passing those federal funds through from the state to the MPO. And the MPO is the only one by state, by federal law, that can allocate those funds.
I'm assuming this is for long-range planning and that sort of thing?
Well, this is possibly for operations, because they pass their operations funds as well.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wasn't quite sure what it was.
Right. But this is the way the federal funds get to the MTA.
Well, I can go ahead and move approval of this if you want to. I'll move approval of item 17, the grant contract.
Need a motion second. All in favor? Any opposed? 17 carries. Right on number 10.
All right, commissioners, this is item number 10 on Murfreesboro Pike. It's a zone change request from AR 2A to CS at the corner of Murfreesboro Pike and Pinhook Road in Antioch. Staff recommends disapproval of the zone change. The existing zoning is AR 2A, which is an agricultural and residential zoning district, agricultural uses and residential with lots larger than two acres. The existing policy, which was approved in Antioch in the recent approval of the Antioch Plan, is suburban mixed-use corridor, and this promotes mixed-use development in terms of uses residential and various non-residential uses. But the policy specifically recommends a site plan-based, site plan-based zone change requests along the corridor, along the Murfreesboro corridor. And the site plan is intended to show how the form-based aspects of the land use policy have been met, including some of these bullet points, how access could be shared among properties, the building and parking placement, dispersing parking within the property, not just having it all on the frontage, and putting building entrances facing the street frontages, providing for pedestrian connectivity, sidewalks along the street frontages and walkways within the site, also landscaping along the street frontages, and also the form-based requirements or recommendations for signage for commercial uses as well. This is a base zone change to CS request, and staff recommends disapproval of the request. The staff recommendation is that the applicant submit a site plan-based zoning district for any non-residential uses that are proposed.
So that is over the public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes, make their presentation. You'd be allowed to keep back two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like, so just give that and pass.
We need, we, yeah. We have to keep those for part of the record, those photographs.
Oh, okay. You give me one back, yes, that's the only thing. I'm Pat McDonald. I am the development partner with Stephen Cozy, who owns all the property. And 1999, it was recommended that we get all of the area that you'll see on that plat rezoned, and we did. Except I forgot to put this one in there. It is only 1.6 acres, but it is directly across the street from the public shopping center that we successfully have developed. And we've put in, I think we have 40.6 acres that we have rezoned into CS zoning and CSS, which, SCC, that is our property. The parcel 121, being 1.21, we have given a right-of-way curve off of Murfreesboro Road into Pinhook Road and put up a traffic site. In addition, we brought in approximately $1.2 million worth of sewer for the whole area. And respectfully, our plan is, is to, we're working right now with a national drug company, and we're also looking at other uses, and more than happy to work with whatever it takes for an SP plan. But basically, it was the same zoning or overlay back in 1999, and we got all the rest of it approved. So that's, our request is to get that done whenever we can. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of the applicant? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There you go. Got two minutes for rebuttal, but I don't see any way to rebut, so. Okay, got a motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Andre?
I'll go to hear from my colleagues first.
Greg?
Well, I guess it's more informational. It sounds like they want to put a drugstore there or something. Yeah. So I guess the, what type of clients, or what are you really...
We're working diligently to get a national chain. I think everybody knows who that is.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess, I guess the question is more really related to staff, is that, or Rick, what is the appropriate, I mean, is, are we, is the staff disapproving because it's just a base zone change and they need to maybe apply for SP or something?
That's right. Based on the policy, an SP is recommended to show the intent of, to show that the form-based part of the land use policy has been met.
Let me just give you just a little bit of background. I mean, this is part of the Antioch Plan, it's been in place now for two months, I guess, three months. And this corridor was heavily discussed during the plan... And, and this corridor was heavily discussed during the plan, and the council members there, too, that are affected on this, requested the elements that are in the policy themselves. And they've also requested that we develop a UDO that ensures those policies be there. So we're recognizing those requests in terms of our staff recommendation. That's, that's the bottom line. I mean, they asked for it, and so we're trying to work on it and get it to them.
I think the council is now asking for something different. So, okay.
We understand.
All right, well, I, maybe the, the proper thing to do would be to defer the, the matter and let the councilman maybe work with the applicant to do an SP, maybe? Okay.
Our biggest thing is, I believe, and Greg can probably explain this to me more, is that we're working with three different clients. Of course, we're really working with this national drug chain. If we were to bring in some, some other operation, there are curbs, I believe, Secretary Bernhardt in landscaping and that kind of thing, you know, if we brought in a, I mean, he's going to throw out a name, like a Thornton's Gas deal that do real nice projects like up in Gallatin, et cetera. They, they took a look at this. Of course, you can't have hedges there when you're having to drive in off them. And that's why we gave that right-of-way going into Pinhook and the traffic light and the turn lanes.
All right, well, thank you. Can I, I mean, does anybody else need to speak, or should I go ahead and make them? Oh, yeah.
I want to make just some observations, just looking at this. I guess I should have looked at that plan a little bit closer, because there's three things that kind of puzzled me about this. I mean, this is Murfreesboro Road. This, the traffic on this road is just, I mean, it's, it's like a racetrack sometimes. And certainly, it, it is amazing that we've got agriculture zone property right there at this intersection. I mean, with the public store in that complex up to the northwest of this site. And then, I can't figure out, what is this structure that's on lot 127? That's, that's not agriculture, is it? There's some kind of building on there.
I think it's a church.
A church?
Yeah, it's a church.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right. But anyway, it just, just looks to me like this needs to be reassessed, and, and possibly something like a drugstore would be appropriate there, in my, my thinking. That's it.
Stuart?
Well, I, I think the staff did the exact right thing. And I think we'd be doing the right thing by deferring this instead of disapproving it. Nobody needs to have to refile with us, because we do need to do something different. But it does sound like, I mean, we approved what needs to happen, that there needs to be a site plan so that there can be some specificity on an area like this. So nobody's arguing that it needs to stay agricultural, but, but it sounds like time is something of the essence, and we, we need to defer it and ask the staff to work very closely with the applicant. So that, I think, was your motion, right?
Defer one meeting.
Before one, well, before one meeting, and see if we can get it done by then. Is that right?
Councilman? Yes.
I just wanted to ask the applicant here, what's the urgency to do this now?
When, when we talk to the people, when they go to committee meetings up in Columbus, Ohio, their problem was, is it zoned?
Well, you know, but you say you're, you're working with three different individuals.
Three different companies, yes.
And all of them have, would have different requirements.
Well, they're all national companies.
But as for a site, they would all have different requirements?
Right.
So why would you, I mean, if, unless you're almost positive that, you know, you've got one of them nailed down, why would you not wait to come back with a specific request tailored to the, the occupant that you're going to have on this corner?
The main thing is that the three readings, I believe, is our problem. We're, we're talking to them that we had zoned land. Everything else is zoned, and I just flat forgot to do that one 13 years ago. So that, whenever I was talking to everybody, they said, "Is it zoned?" I said, "Uh, so that's why I'm here." They want it done. And if, if they're going to make plans to buy land, do the, and they have to do site work. I mean, they've got to do all the site planning to present how it fits on the property. They don't want to go in there if it's going to be turned down.
Right. You know, I, from listening to the other commissioners here, I don't think you walk away here within, with the feeling that we're wanting to disapprove a commercial operation on this corner. But we're just wanting to honor the site plan element of a company coming to town.
Right.
And so I'm very diffused, too.
And, and I would say this, too, to add, just so, for your client or whoever you're dealing with, is that, you know, we're, we're not saying that we oppose it, we're just saying that we need a site plan and, you know...
Well, that puts us off of three readings. I mean, what does that mean as far as...
I think the motion you made was a good one. Defer it here for one meeting, and I think the staff can come up with something with consultation with you that we can probably approve in one meeting, and it won't put you off very far at all. That's what I'm thinking.
It'd be the second Thursday in January, be the next...
And then the two readings after that, before...
Well, that's the council, this, this meeting here with the planning commission.
Oh, I see.
It'd be the second Thursday in January. And the plan can be, whatever you come in, that, that can be changed, but we need something to start with, that can't be changed 180 degrees, but it can be modified, and that can be, that could be done at the staff level.
You know, we, the biggest thing is, we did pioneer that part of Antioch, and we're very proud of it, because the public center, the Mountain View Center, has been extremely well-received in talking to all planning. I'm, I'm there. I mean, we've got another 70 acres that we're developing, and we feel comfortable about it.
There's a motion to defer to the first meeting in January and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. It is, well, we'll go ahead, we're ready for item number 12. Thank you.
I'm Scott Morton with the... Item... Oh, thank you. I'm Scott Morton with the Planning Department's Design Studio. Item number 12 is a request to appeal to Downtown Code Design Review Committee's disapproval of a modification request to eliminate the 0 to 10-foot build-to-zone requirement of the Downtown Code. The property is located at the intersection of 12th Avenue South and Broadway Avenue. The existing McDonald's restaurant's kitchen was damaged in a fire late last year. The applicant is requesting to demolish the existing building and replace it with a new McDonald's prototype. The proposed location of the new building is outlined in yellow on the site plan. Once a demo, once a building is demolished, any new building construction is required by state law to meet the current local zoning requirements. Current zoning for this site is Downtown Code, and it is located within the Gulch South Subdistrict. Existing policy is mixed-use in the downtown community. The downtown community plan and the Downtown Code contain guiding principles and critical planning goals for the future development of properties in the downtown community. This slide contains a brief summary of some of these principles and goals. A more extensive list of the guiding principles and goals are available within your staff report. These goals complement and reinforce the community's vision for this property and the surrounding evolving urban community. The Gulch has emerged as a vibrant urban community within downtown and continues to grow. The McDonald's site is located at an important gateway to the Gulch community and is also located along the proposed East-West Connector Transit Line. The East-West Connector has a planned transit stop in front of the property at the intersection of 12th and Broadway. The Downtown Code standards support the urban growth model established in the Gulch and supports transit-oriented design, which includes orienting buildings close to the street, creating a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment. These photographs show the existing site conditions, which include one vehicular access point from Broadway Avenue and two vehicular access points from 12th. Currently, there is a single drive-through lane with 45 surface parking spaces provided. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant for Downtown Code compliance review. After review, it was determined that the proposed plan did not comply with the Downtown Code standards and would require several modifications to be constructed, including a modification to the required 0 to 10-foot build-to-zone. The required build-to-zone is shown on the plan as a yellow dash line. Modifications may be made to the Downtown Code standards insofar as the intent of the standard is being met. The modification results in better urban design for the neighborhood as a whole, and the modification does not impede or burden existing or future development of adjacent properties. The Downtown Code and the Downtown Community Plan shall be consulted when considering modification requests. Modifications may be approved by planning staff if the requests are considered minor, which is defined as a deviation of 20% or less of a Downtown Code standard. Major modifications are defined as deviations of 20% or more. Major modifications are to be considered by the Downtown Code Design Review Committee. The committee is comprised of eight voting members consisting of design professionals with degrees and/or several years of experience in architecture, landscape architecture, planning or urban design. The committee consists of representatives from the following metro departments and community groups, shown in the slide here. Based on the plan submitted, the modifications requested by the applicant were classified as major and therefore referred to the Downtown Code's Design Review Committee for consideration. I would like to invite one of the committee members, Ben Mosley, to the podium to speak on behalf of the committee and describe the modifications requested by the applicant and the decisions that were determined by the committee.
Commissioners, my name's Ben Mosley. I'm an architect, historic commission appointee. Thank you, Scott. I'd like to thank Council Lady Gilmore for her support. The Design Review Committee reviewed the applicant's request at a hearing in August and granted appropriate modifications as necessary for the redevelopment of the site. And in doing so, upheld, denied two modifications, and we feel upheld the intent of the Downtown Code, which specifically strengthens the emerging urban neighborhood. The four of the six modifications that the committee heard and approved were a reduction of the minimum building height, a reduction of the perimeter landscaping, a reduction of minimum lot frontage, and a reduction of ground floor glazing. I think, based on the expertise around the table of the Design Review Committee and given the specific, both existing and the specific use of a fast-food-in-and-out sort of restaurant, I, I think some sensitivity and some common sense was brought to the, to bear on this project in, in that there was an understanding that it, it may not be able to, because of its use, accommodate all things. But we did deny two modifications, which we felt like were, I think the committee agreed, were, were things that would, would not, would be detrimental to the Downtown Code, and would weaken the urban neighborhood, and I think set the wrong example for what the Downtown Code was intended, was and is intended to do. And that was removing of the street trees and the elimination of the build-to-zone. Again, the committee feels strongly that the intent of the DTC standards must be upheld to maintain the integrity of the zoning and the vision for growth. And I think you can see, and, and members of this body have been instrumental in the projects that are going on in the Gulch and nearby residential projects. And from the site plan, it's, it's apparent that this is a vehicular, existing site plan, and the applicant's proposed site plan is centered purely around moving vehicles in and around the site. And I'm, I'm not sure, well, in, in the committee's review of the Downtown Code, Downtown Code, that is certainly not something that is, is to be encouraged to the, to the exclusion of a pedestrian-oriented building and also maintaining the street edge. This site's a gateway and is located in a very, very important location and very near major public and private investments. It's walkable to existing hotels nearby, the existing and emerging residential and pedestrian neighborhood in the Gulch with 11 North only two blocks away, and lots of rooftops, as it were, down in further up 12th. The, of course, the upcoming BRT line that Scott mentioned, it's three blocks away to the west of HCA proposed investment. So, again, its importance was not lost on the committee. I'll, I'll say, in closing, that the bottom line is, is the applicant's present design is oriented purely towards accommodating the vehicle, and I think that's harkening back to yesterday's thinking, at least as, as my reading of the Downtown Code and the direction that planning staff and that this body is moving, is not congruent with the Downtown Code and the future thinking, future direction of the city and planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. You can see here in the slide before you that shows the existing McDonald's structure is outlined in red, and then the proposed structure and relocation, to see how it moves as compared to the existing structure. And then in yellow, around the perimeter of the site, is the build-to-zone requirement of the Downtown Code within the Gulch South Subdistrict. So showing that yellow line is where buildings are required to be placed to meet the Downtown Code standards for the build-to-zone requirement. To determine if McDonald's fast-food restaurant could comply with the standards, staff conducted a case study research exercise to determine if innovative urban plans were being developed elsewhere by McDonald's, and if the projects were located in a similar urban context as the Nashville property. Staff's research uncovered several successful innovative urban McDonald's developments across the country that would meet the goals and objectives of the Downtown Code, including the required 0 to 10-foot build-to-zone. The following case studies represent urban McDonald's projects that are located in similar contexts as Nashville's site. You can see in these slides that the buildings are oriented towards the street in both these scenarios, it'd be kind of hard to see, but the streets, both are corner properties with the building allocated along both street frontages. They also provide parking to the rear and side of the buildings and drive-through lanes, the double-drive-through lanes are provided. In the Oklahoma City, or, I'm sorry, in the Denver example as seen here, and then in the following Oklahoma City example, also provides the double-drive-through lanes, which is one of the features that's requested by the applicant for the new McDonald's site. These projects are also located in form-based zoning districts that include similar regulations as required by our Downtown Code. Furthermore, planning staff produced two conceptual design scenarios specifically for the McDonald's site. The focus for this design was to create an urban fast-food restaurant model for the site that would meet the applicant's program needs as well as meeting the goals and objectives of the code. Additionally, it was determined that the same amount of parking should be provided that was allocated in the applicant's plan, and the double-drive-through feature should be incorporated into the development scenarios. Conceptual design A contains 42 parking spaces as provided in the applicant's scheme. It orients the bulk of the restaurant building towards Broadway Avenue. Although the building addresses Broadway more prominently in the scheme, the vehicular access is limited to one point along 12th Avenue. Concept design B also contains 42 parking spaces as provided in the applicant's scheme. This scenario allocates two vehicular access points, including one on Broadway and one on 12th. Site accessibility is enhanced in this scheme with the bulk of the building oriented towards 12th Avenue and the main pedestrian entrance located along Broadway. Both designs have unique qualities and represent urban model that meet the program needs of the applicant, the goals and objectives of the Downtown Code, as well as meeting the community's vision for the area. In conclusion, staff in the DRC believe that granting this modification for the required 0 to 10-foot build-to-zone jeopardizes the integrity of the Downtown Code and undermines the trust the community has placed in the code to ensure quality urban design, creating a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment for the downtown community. Staff recommends the applicant's appeal request be disapproved. Thank you.
The applicant be allowed 10 minutes. You've had a request, 15 minutes. And let me see who you have here that would want to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I will be the only person, if we are allowed the 15 minutes, I'll take that entire time. The people that are here with me are McDonald's representatives. They'll answer any questions, but they won't be part of the presentation.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak besides Mr. White?
Port.
What?
Port.
Wants to speak in support?
No, it was support.
Okay. Um... Okay. Then for the timeframe, it looks like we'd have about the same amount of time. Stuart, you had a question on it?
Well, what I don't think we want to do is set a precedent of having 15-minute presentations, because then I think we might get a lot of them. But if what you're saying, Mr. White, is that you are willing to summarize what your colleagues would be saying and include your rebuttal time as well in the 15 minutes, then that would comply with a different rule we already have, which is to allow combining presentations.
That's my request. There'll be a combination, max of two minutes for rebuttal, all included within 15.
So in light of the fact we have a rule that allows that, I think that would be a...
So can we just play through another example, or somebody else came along and said, "I've got all these neighborhood people in support, and the associations are going to give up their two-minute or their five-minute times to speak and lump it in with mine so I can have 15"? Is that, I'm just trying to think what the next request might be and how we would address it. In which case would we grant 15, or why, or how?
I don't know.
I'm not saying, "Don't do it." I just want to think about how we...
I think you're going to have to take those...
Yeah, we might have to look at that.
Just one at a time. So this is sort of not precedent setting, it's just today.
Right. And Mr. White, I think, is suggesting he'll never do this again.
Absolutely.
If I could, before we start not taking any time, I want to make sure that we have had a request from the Review Committee to have the five minutes that's also allowed in here on the opposition. And I just want to make it clear, this is the first modification issue that the commission has heard. This is not a, the commission is the final entity on this, this is an appeal of a modification. So you're operating in a little different fashion. And in order to approve that, the commission, just so you, as you're listening to this, you need to find three factors that are in play here in accordance with the code. One, that the intent of the standard is being met. Number two, that the modification results in a better urban design for the neighborhood as a whole. And number three, that it does not impede or burden existing or future development of adjacent properties. All three of those are criteria that have to be found as you review this in order to be in compliance with the code.
But that, we're doing everything to do with the 15 minutes, all right?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, as you're listening to the presentation, you'll need to listen for those three elements.
Mr. Chairman, before he speaks, I do have one question. I thought we had a combined presentation from staff and the DRC already. Did we not?
Well, the chairman of the DRC presented. There's others, I guess, they can speak on the two minutes if you want to.
Yeah, I would think that should be two minutes for anyone else.
Then with that opposition, you would be allowed 15 minutes. No one else can speak in the audience. If you are here to speak in favor, then raise your hand now, because you will not be allowed to speak if we, if I grant Mr. White 15 minutes. And the opposition, anyone in opposition will be allowed to speak two minutes. So with that opposition, Mr. White, you're allowed 15 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I appreciate your courtesies and time today. First, I want to confirm, my name is Tom White. I'm with Tune, Andrew Kenner White. I represent the applicant in this case, who is McDonald's. McDonald's has been at this site for approximately 30 years, totally legally conforming, et cetera. They are an excellent citizen of the community, property tax, sales tax, the Ronald McDonald House. They're a very civic-minded and contributing entity. The Downtown Code was enacted in 2010, so keep in mind, this business was there operating for 30 years. The Downtown Code came in two years ago. That made this site a non-conforming piece of property. So this is government basically enacting a regulation when a business has been in effect at this site for the number of years I've described to you. What no one will dispute is this, as a grandfathered piece of property, if my client elected to remodel, excuse me, to take the current site exactly as it stands and remodel it only, they don't need anything but a permit, period. And you've seen this site, you know what they can do there. And the history on the site, I think, is particularly important, because in my opinion, if you look at the exhibit that I've handed out and look at Exhibit Number One, it's the Tennessee section on grandfathering properties. And without arguing it further, I just want you to see that in Paragraph One, it talks about a building or a structure, and down there in B1, it talks about if a zoning change occurs in any land area. That's what's happened here. This is government that has changed something with this business. And in my opinion, legally, I believe the McDonald's can not just remodel, I think they can rebuild exactly the way they want to without any requirement on the bulk requirements. That's an issue of dispute, but I want to make it very clear. They can remodel, no bulk requirements, no landscaping, no trees, no nothing, they can do that. I'm of the opinion, they can probably actually tear it down and rebuild without the bulk requirements. It's a very different section, it's hard to rebuild, I believe that's what it stands for. Having said that, here's the history on the property. In 2011, McDonald's came along and they decided they were going to remodel this piece of property. They turned in all their papers, all the applications, they were ready to pull the permit. In December of 2011, a fire occurred on the property, clearly not a voluntary act. So you've got somebody who's been there legally all these years, a fire occurs, damages about 10% of the property. At that point, McDonald's wasn't quite sure what to do. They knew they could always pull their permit and do the remodeling, but they thought, "Maybe it's worthwhile checking into, let's see about a more significant investment in this area." The remodel is about a $700,000 item. To redo the entire store, as they would want to do, is about a two-plus, one or two million dollar project, significant difference. They met with the metro committees on a number of occasions, and I want to be very clear, they've agreed to everything, everything, except for the build-two. There were, a question raised about the trees, they've agreed to all that, and you'll see that on Exhibit Number Four, which I'll come to in a minute. There's any number of things that they've agreed to, which are wider sidewalks, their landscaping, there are a number of things, everything but that one build-two is the issue. Now, I want you to look for just a minute, the staff has made a comment that, and the staff's been very, very engaging, supportive, but look at Exhibit Two and Three for just a minute, because I want to show you why the plan that has been proposed for this site will not work. Now, think about the big picture here for a moment. The client currently has got an operation that has three curb cuts, one on Broadway, two on 12th. If you look at the staff's first proposal, which is called Concept Design A, what does it have? It has one way in and one way out on 12th Avenue. Look at the next exhibit, which is Exhibit Number Three. Exhibit Number Three has got two ways in and two ways out. So the first thing that they proposed is that we have either one less in-and-out or two less in-and-outs on this very valuable piece of property. And I want you to think about the next thing for a moment. Look at, for just a moment, Exhibit Number Two, and the vehicular traffic on this pattern. This traffic comes in off 12th, comes around, and where does it exit? It exits on 12th Avenue South, directly across the lane of traffic coming into the site. Nobody's going to think that makes any sense. Look at Exhibit Number Three. Exhibit Number Three does the exact same thing. The traffic may come in off Broadway, or it may come in on 12th Avenue South, but this one's even worse. It may have two curb cuts, but look what happens. When the traffic comes down there past the drive-through lane, not only do they have to come across the lane of traffic coming in, but there's a building there. They can't even see around it. Now, think about this also, in the plan, both Two and Three, every pedestrian that comes into that site, that parks in that lot, has to walk through the drive-through lane to get to the building. Look at Two and Three. Everybody has got to walk through the drive-through lane to get to the building. Now, having said that, and aware of this issue, we contacted a traffic engineer, Bobby Murphy, RPM, well-known by this group. We asked him to give us a traffic study. He's done that. I think anybody can look at what's been proposed and see, it absolutely makes no sense at all. Now, if you look at Exhibit Number Five, which is the traffic impact study from Bobby Murphy, and I say "traffic impact study," it's just analysis by him. I'm not going to read this entire thing, but it speaks to exactly what I've just addressed with the commission. If you look at Page Two, Modification Request, that's what my client's asking for. Basically, Paragraph One, "The drive-through, as proposed by my client, wraps around the building, and the entering and existing traffic patterns are designed to reduce traffic conflict points. The entering and exiting traffic on 12th Avenue South are separated, which helps reduce traffic conflicts. Number Two, 'The driveways and circulation system are designed to provide adequate delivery truck access. Trucks can enter from either Broadway or 12th Avenue South.'" Get into Concept Design A, which was the first proposal by the staff. What does he say? "This will result, excuse me, result in undesirable vehicle and pedestrian conflicts." This is the traffic engineer. Number Three, "All the traffic exiting the restaurant will have to cross entering traffic." It's obvious what they have to do. And he goes on to say, "Traffic congestion's likely." Then he goes to the other one, which is the second plan from the staff, and goes on to say the same thing. Look at Paragraphs Three and Four, "It's a problem, you've got to cross that traffic coming in. Once again, it doesn't appear that truck turning paths are analyzed." You've got a very capable staff here, but designing sites for somebody like McDonald's is not in their field of expertise. McDonald's hires professionals, they do this all over the country, all over the world. And I want to ask you, why would McDonald's be here today with this request? Because they're a bad corporate citizen? Because they don't know it works? They know it absolutely will not work. And when you look at this site plan, I want to address the reason specifically why you'll find those three things are met here. The first one is policy itself. If you look at this area, and the commission's generally familiar with them, from the east end of the Gulch, down to Interstate 40, where the interstate comes in there, absolutely not only not pedestrian-friendly, never will be pedestrian-friendly. If you come down that stretch right there, you've got what? You've got this building located here, you've got the Exxon station right across the street. They did a redo eight, nine years ago, spent a bunch of money. Where are they? Way back off the street. You look at the other buildings there, it's the same. So I'm asking you, this is a site where it's not, where the policy just does not apply. It doesn't make any difference, this is the first time somebody asked for it. If it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. Let's talk about, with respect to the vehicular movements here. They said, "This is really strange. McDonald's makes it look like this is a vehicle-driven site." It absolutely is. It's half a block off the interstate. The stats show that 95% of the customers here are vehicle-driven, 95%. 70% actually drive-through. That's a huge thing on this site. You've got 25% that come in and park and walk. Those are the people that, under their plan, are going to have to come through the drive-through lane to get into the restaurant. You've got 5% that's pedestrian-driven. Now, that's McDonald's stats, they're not here to be difficult, that's what's driving this site. Now, I want to ask you, you've seen different plans up here. Is anybody on this commission going to sit here and say, "Well, let's see, if you put the building up against Broadway, if you put it up against 12th, that's going to bring more pedestrians to this area as opposed to what McDonald's has proposed"? Absolute not. All the ideas which have been articulated, the BRT, everything else, every one of those goals can be met more satisfactorily with the plan of my client. I also want to mention, you look at this plan up here, which is the proposal by McDonald's, they're moving the building 24 feet closer to 12th Avenue South. And the reason they can't come right up against it is if you look at the vehicles that come off Broadway, they've got to come down, they head south. They've got to find a way to come around the restaurant to get in the queue. You absolutely don't want them coming off Broadway, and you can see that extruded curb piece there where the second drive-through is. That's to keep people from being cowboys and coming off Broadway and getting into the queue lane. There's got to be a way to come around, circle away on the east side and get into the queue lane. If you bring the restaurant directly up against the street, you don't have that way to traverse, period. It's just common sense. Now, I want to talk to you with respect to the issues that I feel are absolutely compelling here. McDonald's has got a big investment in this piece of property. They can spend $700,000 and remodel just exactly where it is. They don't have to comply with one bulk regulation, no landscaping, no trees, no wider sidewalks. They've agreed to do every one of those things, every single thing, but build a site that won't work economically. This is not a plan where somebody comes into an area of town and says, "I think I'm going to buy here, what do I have to do"? They've been there for 28 years before these new regulations came in. And I'm submitting to you, if someone on the commission feels that putting this building either up against Broadway or up against 12th will bring more pedestrian traffic there, then you should vote against it. Nobody can say that, in my humble opinion. Now, in looking at the issues that I think are so compelling, McDonald's is willing to invest 2.1 or 2.2 million to do what they're talking about, agree to every single thing. And that's Exhibit Four. The Exhibit Four that's in your packet is what I'm asking you to approve today. It's what's up on the screen, it's what's in that exhibit, and it is clearly the only plan you see that is safe, and it has a major significant investment by McDonald's. What about the city? The sales tax, the property tax? It jumps up immediately with that kind of investment of 2.00-plus million dollars on the site as opposed to the others. With respect to other matters, you spend 2-plus million on the site as opposed to a remodel on the site, it's a huge difference in appearance. I mean, this company's been around a long time, they know what they're doing, they'd like to build a newer building, a more modern, a more transitional building, but this is like, no good deed goes unpunished. Someone comes in, finds themselves in this situation, knows they can just pull a permit and do it without any bulk regulations, instead they explore it. And with respect to what's been commented about the committee, this is no denigration or disparagement of any committee member. If you feel the Downtown Code really has some merit, you need to stand up for it and advocate for it. But at some point, you've got to recognize, is this the part of town that we're talking about? When you go from the Gulch, I'm asking you to think, from the Gulch heading west to the interstate, what happens when you get beyond the interstate? Do you want McDonald's to move on the other side and build someplace where they don't have to comply with anything? They're saying they'll do exactly what's practical. And every goal, one of the things Mr. Bernhardt said is, "Can you say that the goals of the Downtown Code are being met"? Absolutely. The bus rapid transit, people coming to the site, it's absolutely far more driven by what they propose than anything else. So I'm respectfully asking that you do what I think is safety-driven, it's equitable, it's fair. Frankly, I think legally, they may be able to do this without any other permission. And the appeal here is unusual, it's to this board instead of the standard variance to the board's only appeals. That's the way it was set up. In my opinion, it's appropriate to be granted, I appreciate your courtesies.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward, you'd be allowed two minutes. Mr. White, if you'd take your display down so we can see that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm David Kline, I live at 1344 Rosa L. Parks Boulevard in this district. Like Ben Mosley, who spoke with you, along with the staff, I'm a member of this committee that's been referenced, whose expertise has been described to you. We considered each aspect of the application separately, both in terms of the letter and the spirit of the law. And each decision of the committee was unanimous, offering relief in some matters, but unwilling to contravene the most basic intent of the zoning code. That in regulatory and factual terms, the city's leaders, planning and council, have determined to think about downtown Nashville and to build downtown Nashville in a way that is consistent with a major and growing urban center. Zoning now recognizes this site as urban, not a commercial strip one would expect off of a suburban or rural highway interchange. This is to say nothing of McDonald's as a business, of course, but the code was created to serve Nashville, not a very specific business model adopted by a particular major restaurant chain. We welcome McDonald's, even as a drive-through operation, but only insofar as it was willing to adapt the site design to the existing and emerging context as required by zoning. The use of the site was not questioned, only the site design. Since inception, about three years ago, the Review Committee has met only twice to consider an applicant request. This infrequency testifies to the success of the form-based code, which is gaining national praise for its unusual degree of friendliness to business and developers balanced with an appreciation for the physical characteristics of the city. This code is a win-win for development and for urban design. While the applicant we recognized retains the right to remodel, we did not feel that we could approve demolition and rebuilding along the lines of a suburban prototype without being drastically out of sync with the zoning. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none is emotion, close the pub, you've got two minutes for rebuttal, I'm sorry. He's got two minutes, or one minute fifty-nine here.
I'll respond this way. First, the comment was made that one of the three items is to be specific, that in fact all the intents are made, and I want somebody to single out one intent of the Downtown Code that is not met by this site. One goal, it's not there. Nobody can say that putting this building in a place that would be a financial debacle for this company is something that was contemplated by the Downtown Code. Again, we're down to this one issue. It's one issue. Does it make sense to allow this company to ask for this modification of this plan and allow the building to be 20 to 24 feet closer to the street than it is now, with a $2.1 million investment? Does that make better sense? Or does it make sense to put it up against the street where we've just showed you, the traffic engineer, who is well-known and respected, has said, "It's a safety problem, period"? The other item is... The other item is, with respect to the different sites, we've got an expert here, you can ask the questions to him if you want. We've analyzed every site the staff has looked at. Again, we're not here to be difficult and abrasive. All those other sites are totally different. Number one, they either have more area. Number two, they're right in an urban area downtown as opposed to this. And number three, they've got far less sales. This is a huge operation at this place, where the traffic, as I told you, is 95% vehicular-driven, and it always will be. It's right there off the interstate. We'd respectfully ask that the group look at this and grant this modification. It's what, quote, "variances or modifications are looked for." The fact that it may be the first one out of the box, frankly, lends to its merit and credibility. And they've resolved everything but the one issue. So will you go with the common sense and practicality, the equity, the fairness of safety? Or will you say, "No, there's a code there, we just can't deviate from it"? That's what it gets to. I appreciate your courtesies. I urge you to approve our plan set out in Exhibit Number 4. Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, close the public hearing on the favor. Any opposed? Jeff.
You know, I hate to agree with Mr. White, but I happen to agree with everything that he said. And as a retail developer, common sense has to apply. We can't take a vehicular site and make it pedestrian-friendly overnight. And people are not going to walk from 11 North to this McDonald's. This is going to be a vehicular site forever. And so I'm going to vote against the staff's recommendation.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. First, before staff, one of the things outlined in the report by the engineer dealt with the truck turning path. They asked, "Was this actually analyzed?" Did you all take this into consideration when you did the design, the proposed design?
I mean, to answer the question, these aren't detailed engineer drawings. They are conceptual nature, like Mr. White said. Truck traffic, as far as the turning movements that are accommodated today with the existing driveway locations, would be, the proposed plans have, you know, similar locations in regards to the turning movements of the vehicles and how they enter the site. And so, obviously, the final engineering would have to ensure that the proper curb radiuses were provided, but, you know, that's something that could, is more at the detailed level than, you know, we're able to provide at this level.
Let me try and address that, too. I think it's important to understand that what we were trying to do was show that there were options out there. These are not engineered plans. Staff wasn't intending to do that. I think it's interesting that we get criticized. Staff will freely admit that we have not designed 38,000 McDonald's like the McDonald's Corporation has. We do anticipate that out of the 38,000, they might have one that would fit on this site. And I think it's critically important to understand a couple of other things. What you're acting as, and I tried to mention this before, but it's important, this is not a policy discussion, and Mr. White tried to frame that, that we're looking at policy and did you meet policy. This is a code issue. The commission is functioning as a quasi-judicial role, which is not a typical role of the commission, and you have very specific standards. It's not, did you meet the intent of the goal of the plan? The question is, did you meet the intent of the standard of the code that was adopted as the law and a code by the council? And that standard is very clear, that standard is pedestrian-friendly. And so I've tried to structure, stress that, but it's important. The commission hasn't functioned typically in a quasi-judicial role, and this is a different type of situation. And I'll also say, Mr. White's absolutely right, because they can build back the existing facility. And I think it's up to the commission to clearly state how the standard is being met or not being met, not whether or not this is good policy or not, whether or not this is a good goal. Because the result may very well be, rebuilding that for $700,000 is a much stronger investment in the future than building something that's going to be $2 or $3 or $4 million that doesn't meet the intent of the code. I also would, and I don't know how many times Mr. White's been out there on Broadway at night and seen the number of pedestrians that are out there. I dare say, the manager of that McDonald's knows the number of pedestrians that walk from the hotels. They tend to be as far as 20th and 21st and all that down, that, they're down there all the time. There's a ton of pedestrians. And I would just say that with the development of the Palmer property and the development of the Buckingham property, you're going to have a whole lot more pedestrian. This is a much more pedestrian-oriented location than was portrayed in terms of the presentation.
And I'm glad you shared that with us, Rick, because that was going to be my next question dealing with pedestrian traffic. And I guess my second question for the applicant deals with, how does the design that you have now, I guess up there now, how does that make it safer than some of the proposed sites that staff outlined for you? And I'll tell you why, the concern that calls me. If we're going towards a more pedestrian area, I don't see much difference between what staff put in place in terms of the hazards you outlined and the hazards that are outlined here.
Very simple answer. You've got, under the staff plans, you've got the people that are pedestrians that come into their vehicles and walk in, they've got to walk through the drive-through lane. During busy peak times, that's 175 vehicles an hour. So when we're talking, that's why Bobby Murphy, the traffic engineer, said, "The plans as submitted and he saw by Metro were clearly totally not safe, because people would park and have to walk through a drive-through lane." And as you saw from both staff proposals, the staff had the traffic coming out against a lane of traffic. So for pedestrians and vehicles, the safety traffic people are saying, "It doesn't work." That's just not vehicular. Murphy's report didn't just address vehicles, it said pedestrians. It said it wasn't safe for pedestrians. That's my opinion about the difference between Plans A and B, which is the only way the staff's been able to come up and putting them up against the street versus our plan. We are driven by a publicly, a very high visible company that's totally interested in the safety of the pedestrians, because as Rick Bernhardt said, the issue is here pedestrian-driven. If you believe that putting this building up against Broadway or 12th makes it more pedestrian-friendly, you should disapprove it. That's all. I don't think anybody could possibly argue that, but that's our position.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Andre.
I keep looking at some of the other cities where I presume they're successful. You mentioned that they don't do the volume that this site does. And yet, I've sort of counted parking spaces. I see in Louisville, half of the parking traffic, people who park and then walk in from their car do cross the drive-through lane. It seems like in San Diego, there are 36 parking spaces, so obviously that is, I assume that means less volume, because you're talking about 42 in yours. And yet, it manages to put the drive-through sort of to one side. It has two accesses. I'm just wondering if, how much... Granted, maybe the planning staff's versions weren't exactly what would be perfect for McDonald's, but the concept of having the, come up to, the Build 2 Zone and allow it to be more pedestrian-friendly for this increasing amount of pedestrians we are learning that we have down there, what could McDonald's do to make it more pedestrian-friendly than it is today? I think is part of what our wish would be. And moving it 20 feet without any other changes, I'm not sure it really does that. And then, so I'd like to listen to that. I'd like to hear about the Louisville crossing traffic. I'd like to hear about some of these other sites that do come up to the road. Are they, is their business thwarted by that? It seems like it's not, it seems like in San Diego and some of those places, it seems like it could work. And is there a plan where you could come close to the road, then you have? And also, I guess my last question would be, you've told us what it costs to remodel, you've told us what it costs to rebuild based on your plan. If we could find a flow that worked, is there a hugely more enormous cost to bring it closer to the road than what you're talking about? It seems like if you're going to rebuild the building, it wouldn't be that big a larger expense upfront if we could find the flow that worked for your business. Which, I agree, maybe it's not one of these, but you see our point. We're trying to get buildings closer, we're trying to make it, if we are having more pedestrians, how can we make it more friendly for the new pedestrians we're getting?
Right. And we... In the middle of dialogue, can we ask him to come?
I'm asking him.
Are we trying to, okay.
I wanted him to address those questions. I don't feel like I know that answer.
All right.
And I'm trying to do it in relation to understanding the nature, I mean, what we're trying to accomplish is being more pedestrian-friendly. And so if, and I don't see how it would impede the business to move the building in a different location on the site. It doesn't seem like it'd be that much more expensive than the $2.1 million to move it 20 feet. So my question is, if there could be a flow that looks like San Diego or some of these other places, it could be successful, could we make it more pedestrian-friendly?
We really...
More than what we've got?
My only question was, is it appropriate to be engaged in a running dialogue about it, or do we just need to vote based on what we, do we need to just...
Ask each other that? Well, I'll just raise, I'll float that question. I don't know, I'll wait and hear from everybody else, but I guess...
You can, I'm sorry.
You ask him a question, you need an answer from him, right?
Well, I guess I'm curious, because it's not a question I can answer, but I feel like if we're trying to accomplish a code goal of being more pedestrian-friendly, did in, yeah, I want to ask the applicant. Did you consider something that was to the Build 2 Zone that had a flow that could work, and was that prohibitively expensive? Or why is that not some option that we're seeing as a potential presentation?
I want to answer, we absolutely considered every possible thing. And although I want to be very clear, no disparagement to the staff at all, this has been going on since the fire of December of last year. The staff has looked very, very diligently, and the only place that they have suggested are the two that we see up here. And my response to you is, we've also looked and figured, if you were going to put it up against either Broadway or 12th, it basically had to be one of the two that they had there. Our issue was, it couldn't possibly be done in a safe manner, for the reasons that is in Bobby Murphy's traffic report. It could not be done in a safe manner. That was the number-one thing. The second was, as far as the new site, there are pedestrian bollards, there's a pedestrian crosswalk, if you look here on 12th Avenue, things that are not there right now. So, again, I want to be very clear. Why would McDonald's be here trying to take on this issue if they felt they could do it and make good with the city where they've been such a good partner for all these years? They've looked at it, said they cannot do it safely. That's their issue. It's borne out in the traffic report. That's not me, that's the traffic engineer. But everybody that looks at that plan can see what I think the common sense dictates, which is, you can't do it. Their vehicles in either Plan 1 or 2 have the vehicles leaving coming directly across the traffic coming in. Nobody can say that's safe. And so if you say to me, "Is there another place on the lot where it could go?", there may be. We've certainly explored it, and we're open to any ideas. But again, after a 12-month period of time, this is what the staff has come up with. We've looked significantly. And again, we were underway to do a remodel before the place ever burned. So we've been looking at the site for a long time. I'm apologizing to you, but I want to make it clear, we are totally open to any concept that would not be a pedestrian vehicular problem for this site. It's not there. That's why we're here.
I want to keep thinking, so I'd like to hear from everybody else, too. May have more questions.
Sure. It's a very interesting concept that we're being asked to look at. We're being asked to consider overruling a design review committee. That was pretty broad-based. It's not a de novo, well, I don't know, maybe it is de novo legally speaking, but it is of some concern to me that a group of people that was pretty diverse did vote unanimously of those who were there and voting, that this is not a good idea, that this would violate the code, in fact. I don't want to sound callous, but it wouldn't bother me, even though it might not be the best thing that McDonald's wanted to do, for you to rebuild as it now is, as it was. You have that right. And the value of that, as opposed to all these other pictures we've seen, is that it would, it would not be in conflict with our code, because you have that legal right, notwithstanding the code. It would not set a precedent for throwing out this downtown, this downtown code, Design Review Committee's recommendations and interpretations anytime somebody wanted to. To me...
You said rebuild, did you mean remodel?
Remodel and rebuild, whatever. I don't, I don't think they can completely, I think it has to be repaired and remodeled and restored, but I don't know that. I'm not going to tell Tom what he can and can't do from his standpoint of non-conforming use. But I think it's a codes issue. We adopted a code, I think the council adopted a code. I don't think it was just us. This is, it may be that McDonald's would, unless they get what they want here, that they would go back to exactly what they have now and restore it the way it was before the fire. I don't think that's a bad option at all. So I think it was a great presentation, and if any presentation could have convinced me to go against the existing code and the desire we need to have to make a consistent statement that downtown needs to be pedestrian-friendly, and you can talk all you want about all the asphalt, but I think the point has been made successfully that between hotels and bus stops and proximity to a lot of rooftops, this is a residential, a pedestrian designation too. So for all those reasons, I think we go with the Design Review Committee. See what happens. Phil.
I've been looking at all these plans. I don't like any of them. And, you know, you're talking about the safety factor. By the way, let me disclaim her first thing. I don't own any stock in McDonald's, but I am into McDonald's every cotton-picking week, for one reason or other. So, I mean, I know the safety factors, and I know that every time I get out of my car, I got to watch the other cars coming in the lot. And the only way you can resolve that is to have two buildings on the site. One to take care of the traffic during the cars, and the ones that want to walk into a place and sit, order and sit down. Now, that's probably totally impractical, but it's the only way I know to keep east from meeting west. And so I think, I'll consider that if we're going to do anything at all, leave it alone. Leave it alone. I think, Stuart, I don't always agree with Stuart, but...
I never do.
It's a special day, mark it on your calendar. I agree with him.
We're probably all...
But you might as well leave it is and give everybody the warning, "Watch out for the traffic." That's all I got to say.
Counselor.
Just a couple of left-field comments before I ask my real questions here. But to the issue of pedestrian safety, I don't see that there's a great deal of difference between the plan that we're looking at here and any of the plans that have been proposed. I mean, when you get out of your car, if you park on this current site, you have to walk across people who are coming through the driveway or people who are leaving the drive-in. That's a given now, and that's not going to change, just like Commissioner Ponder said. And I used to be in this place, if I, coming downtown in the morning, I would come here to get a sausage biscuit and a senior coffee. Your traffic pattern here doesn't work. If you come off a driveway, the way I did, all of these parking spaces on the back and the backside are often filled, forcing you to go out on 12th Avenue and to come back in and take the spaces along Broadway that people don't normally take because of all the drive-through traffic. So this plan, if you do it back the way it is, it has problems that you need to address. I don't know how you do that, but from a user, I'm just telling you what my experience is. Now, to the real question, if the, I'm looking at this diagram here, and if my calculations are right, the frontage on 12th Avenue, if it were moved forward seven feet, I believe that pulls it up to the Build 2 line.
Yeah, but it would need to meet both Build 2 lines.
Oh, on Broadway and, okay, okay. So that question goes away. All right. Well, given the task that we are to evaluate, these three different criteria here, could somebody give us a review of the standards or the goals of the code? I'd just like to know what those are here, if we're evaluating against those.
Yeah, I can go through some of those standards that we had in the slide before. Let me go back to previously. And, you know, I wanted to reiterate as well, it's just what we're, as far as the rights that exist and, you know, what we're looking... exist, and, you know, what we're looking at as far as on this, for this request, and that's dealing with, this modification request would have set a precedent as far as what the zoning implications would be, whereas today, they could, by right, renovate the structure and even make additions to the structure to a certain level without full compliance to downtown code. And so, staff position that the downtown code, you know, not be appealed and modified in so much that it has a lasting effect on other properties that exist within downtown in future. So, going through some of the, here's just some bullet points of the guiding principles from the downtown plan, or the downtown code, excuse me. Let me go through the community plan first, since it's left on the screen. On your screens, you can see some of the critical goals are placing the buildings at the property line, creating pedestrian-friendly streetscape along Broadway and 12th Avenue specifically, as part of the community plan. Parking being located behind buildings, screened from public view, vehicular accessibility does not sacrifice pedestrian safety, minimize the effects of parking entrances, and this is, staff's plans, you know, made an attempt to reduce the number of access points that were provided, existing, existing, there's three locations, two on 12th and one on Broadway. Staff reduced that to two in one scheme and one in another. And, you know, the schemes were done as a conceptual level, so really not to limit the creativity of the applicant as far as coming up with different design schemes for the site, but, and we haven't seen any of the plans that were created as part of their exercise as far as our urban plans. And we created several concepts throughout the process. The two that we presented to you today were just two that we felt like to bring forward in a more formal way, but we looked at, you know, a dozen different orientations and shared that with the applicant along the way. The code also supports transit corridors, I'm sorry, the community plan, the downtown code promoting civic, commercial, entertainment center uses, growth that enhances the character of downtown, creating active, attractive streetscapes, nurturing urban neighborhoods, creating great spaces, and providing improved mobility, which includes vehicular, pedestrian, and transit as part of improved mobility of all types of modes within the area.
Scott, let me let Joni address the specific standards that would be element one, because those are, the second two, whether it's a better urban design for the neighborhood is maybe a little more subjective, and whether it would impede or burden is a little more subjective, but the first one deals with the standard is being met, and Joni can go through the specific standards that are being affected here.
Right. So what Scott's been reading to you are ways and things to think about when you're considering a modification. It's what the DRC considered when they were weighing this modification. But the actual standard is that the building be built within zero and 10 feet of the property line of both streets. There are height requirements, there are facade width requirements that go along with that, but the zoning requires that the building be built within zero and 10 feet of the property line. And I don't think that it's, it's too much to reiterate that the commission approved this unanimously almost three years ago, the council approved this unanimously almost three years ago, and that every project we've had come through, almost $600 million of private investment has been able to comply with this code. It's not the staff's responsibility to create a design that complies. It's the staff's responsibility to enforce the zoning. And they've asked for the modification, and it's your decision whether you think it's appropriate to waive the law in this circumstance.
Okay. So, do we have to find that all three of these are being met, or is it like the best two out of three?
It's all three, the way it's written. It's all three.
Then, I mean, if we're to make a judicial decision that says, does what is being requested meet one, two, and three requirements, then I don't think it does. If it's all or nothing. Now, I appreciate the applicant's...
And, don't go by me, I guess we need to have our legal counsel weigh in.
That's exactly right, Councilman Claiborne. You have to essentially say yes to each one of the three prongs of the test for whether or not you're going to allow this modification. You have to, in order to approve it, you would have to find that the intent of the standard is being met, that the modification would result in better urban design for the neighborhood as a whole, and that the modification does not impede or burden existing or future development of adjacent property. So you have to find on all three.
Well, you know, I'm sympathetic to the applicant and can sympathize in many ways with what they're requesting, but like has been stated, we're not being asked to make a zoning decision, we're being asked to make a judicial decision, and we have a very clear criteria to meet, and I don't think that we meet all three of these.
Jeff, you want to say something?
Let me ask this body a couple of difficult questions. If the Exxon across the street burned, and it's the only gas station on Broadway getting to downtown, are we going to make Exxon dig up the tanks, bring the building to 12th and Broadway? Yeah, I guess that's where I'm struggling with...
They can build back. They can remodel, they can build back, they can even, what's the trigger for, I mean, how far can they go before they hit the trigger that really puts the downtown code into effect?
Well, I mean, there's different trigger levels, and I can go through those trigger levels if you want, but, you know, once you destroy the structure to a certain level, it requires different compliance levels. And the downtown code created a structure that, you know, provided more flexibility for projects that only had minor renovations or expansions, and even demolitions. So, trigger level one is an addition of 25% or less of the square footage of the existing building that required to meet, to the extent practical, meet the, shall be in compliance with the applicable standards of the code. Level two is an addition of 25% or more, whichever's greater, and they're, in addition to meeting the applicable code provisions, they're also required to make improvements to the sidewalk according to the downtown streetscape design guidelines. Where possible, the addition of street trees and parking lot landscaping. Level three is the demolition or destruction of more than 5% and less than 50%, and it has similar requirements adding on to the new construction portion, whatever's, to the extent practical, shall be in compliance with the standards. So, whatever the addition is, the ability of that addition to meet the standards of the code in regards to glazing and any other relevant Metro Code requirements, or downtown code requirements.
But as long as they stay under the 25% expansion, they...
Let me just, they've got a lot of options in terms of if they want to do something to the existing building. And, you know, what they've asked is to, they're appealing, you know, the ruling of the commission, so we, I don't know, I think you could go 100 different ways in terms of what they could do, but that's, I mean, I don't, we could be here all night, I guess, if we want to go there.
Well, the reason I was asking the question was trying to respond to the commissioner there, that we're not telling them they can't be here. We're just saying that if you want to be here, then you got to stay under a certain ceiling, and if you want to go above that ceiling, then you got to meet the code. Is that...
Yeah, I mean, to demolish the building, I mean, once the building's demolished, the zoning code by state law is required to follow, so according to, you know, what we've, our interpretation of that state law, and I'll let Metro Legal speak on that in more detail, but, you know, once that's established, the zoning must be followed. Anything less, then, you know, they're able to renovate and improve their facades and at the existing location.
Right. If the, and this is where we would disagree with the position of the applicant, is that we don't read the nonconforming use statute 137208 to allow them to rebuild after demolition at the exact same location. If they demolish the property, or demolish the structure, rather, and rebuild, they have to rebuild it in accordance with the code. They can renovate at that site, they can expand at that site in its current condition, but as soon as they demolish, demolition occurs and they rebuild on that site, it's our position that they have to come into the code, and the reason is, to comply with the code, and the reason is because 137208 provides protection for structures in accordance with the use. This is a conforming, currently conforming use, so the protections in 137208 are not triggered, because it does not protect a structure aside from the use. It protects the use, and as a result, it protects the structure along with that use. But the use here is already conforming. So if they tear it down and rebuild it back, then it would have to come into compliance with the code. Does that, okay.
I want to clarify for one thing. You said in one of your comments there that they could expand up to how much?
Well, they can expand, the way that Scott was going through, there's different levels of expansion that they have to comply with certain parts.
Okay, but a maximum that any of them could do?
Was it 25% I think?
25%, okay.
It's more than 50% is the maximum, you know, that requires full trigger of full downtown code compliance. It'd be more than 50%. Anything less, there's different levels, as far as what's triggered in the code.
Jeff, I'd like to hear. Okay, I need a motion.
Wait, I have another question. Sorry. I just, I'm looking, I'm listening to Councilman Claiborne's comments earlier about the use of the existing site, and thinking about being more pedestrian-friendly, and I'm looking at the Oklahoma City site, which to me is very similar to what the staff drew, except that the drive-through traffic is going the other way. So if you look at, I'm trying to suggest a possible solution, I hope, but if you look at the street in the Oklahoma City site that's on the right-hand side of the picture, where the traffic is going like our Broadway traffic does, and you come in and go through the drive-through here to this site, and then the parking is on the other side, it seems like that's a solution. It seems like it is working, and it's safe for pedestrians, and then creates a corner that for future bus traffic and pedestrians and things, the pedestrians can enter straight into the building. Are there real impossibilities with that design that can't be somehow applied to this site, maybe with certain modifications?
Mr. Chair, I want to order, if the applicant is going to be able to prosecute their case, I'd like to see a person promoted.
Okay, well, maybe I shouldn't answer that. Okay, I just, okay, never mind.
I need a motion. I think we've discussed it, we know where we're going to go, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we approve staff recommendation.
The technical motion would be to uphold the determination of the downtown design review committee.
That's what the staff recommended. I still move that we uphold the determination of the downtown code design review committees.
We've got a motion second to go with staff recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries in to deny the applicant's request. Phil, Phil, you have anything from Parks?
Well, I'm very excited to, again, emphasize the importance of the 600 acres that we approved in our last meeting for purchase by the city. This comes up at the council meeting on next Tuesday night, and it's extremely exciting. This would be the center point of a huge park in the eastern part of the county that would be bigger than Percy Warner Park when you get through putting all the elements together. Now, that would include a pedestrian bridge from one side of Stone River to the other, which would connect it to Peeler Park and the Taylor Farm. So we're talking roughly 1,600 acres with the Ravenwood Club, this 600 site in the bend of the river, and those two other sites, with some other possibilities being added to it. This is exciting. This is, as the mayor says, this is not for just something now, this is forever. This is something that will be there, and we've got to take advantage of the opportunity. And I want to thank all the agencies that have been involved in this, the owner, the Greenways from Nashville, the Parks Department, Jim Fight with the Mayor's Department, those people, they contributed money, personal money, to help fray the cost of this. You know, there's $15 million in the budget for open space acquisition. This is 8.2. So this is not going to eat it all up. It just makes a lot of sense to buy this land and protect it for use as a park for centuries to come. So, thank you for my soapbox.
Thanks for the council, Councilman.
I would just second what the Councilman Ponder, Commissioner Ponder said. This is a tremendous thing for the east side of the county, and it certainly balances out park space between the west and east. There's still opportunities for people to be involved in making private donations. There's a couple of websites, you can go to the Greenways website, you can go to the, what's the other one? The Land Conservancy website. So there are...
Land Trust.
Land Trust, right. So there are opportunities for people, and we will do, this is one reading resolution. I'm optimistic that the council will approve it. And just for those people who might be watching, that might question spending of those dollars, these are dollars that are designated. They can't be spent for anything except preserving open space. So, can't build a school, can't pave a road, you know, can't do any of these other things. These dollars are set aside by the council in the capital budget for the acquisition of open space for the particular purpose of preservation. So I think this is a win-win for everybody concerned, the owner, the land trust, the Parks Department, and ultimately, the city, so.
Rick, anything real quick?
Just a couple of real quick things. I know we've gotten several of your disclosure forms for your work on your continuing education, but you also have the financial disclosure, and if you need any help on that, we'll provide you any information. Just to mention the Planning Department holiday party next Wednesday, the 19th, at Shelby Park Nature Center, which will be soon connected to that park. You can go from Shelby Park all the way to that property they bought. I'd like to congratulate Joni on her graduation from her Management Institute, and I would like to introduce Amy. Amy, you're here. Amy Diaz-Borrega is here, is a new employee. She'll be making presentations next month, probably. Unless you can get them all on consent. That's all.
Any other words of wisdom from anybody? See you next year.